All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Menlo Park City Council meeting for April 17, 2018. My name is Peter O'Tockee. I'm very honored to serve as mayor this year. And I'm now calling the meeting to order. I'd like to introduce my colleagues up here who are present this evening. Councilmember Rich Klein to my right, councilmember Catherine Carlton, on my left Vice Mayor Ray Mueller, and on my left Councilmember Kirsten Keith. Over at the table over here is our city attorney, Bill McClure, and our city manager, Alex McIntyre, who will introduce our new city clerk. So Alex.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am really pleased to introduce Judy Heron. And Judy joins us from the town of Atherton, where she served as the deputy city clerk for five years. Judy joined us in early April, so she's had a couple of weeks of onboarding with us. And this is her first run with you guys, and I'm expecting best behavior by everybody tonight. And I'm going to ask patience with Judy. Obviously, the technology is new to her, so as we are going through voting and things like that, I'm sure she'll do great. She is being supported tonight by Elena as well. Judy holds a BA degree in government with an emphasis in state and local public policy from Grand Canyon University, and she is presently working on her master's degree as well. A few things we're hoping Judy does within the next year: implementing the five new city council districts, as you know, which is coming our way; implementing the new electronic filing system for all campaign finance statements; and, fingers crossed, we're hopeful that she will be able to release an RFP for an electronic agenda management system. That's one of my big hopes from the city clerk's office this year. So anyways, welcome Judy, and good luck.
Yes, welcome Judy, and Elena, thank you for assisting. And I also wanted to thank Clay Curtin for his help in the last couple of months in his interim role. So with that, if I can ask all of you to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have anything to report from our very brief closed session. We have no presentations and proclamations. I am going to make a couple announcements. First, I wanted to announce that the previously noticed public hearing for the appeal of the Planning Commission decision regarding 752 Gilbert Avenue has been rescheduled for June, and it will be re-noticed. And then the second thing I wanted to announce is that we will be moving, we will be changing the order when we get to Item K1, 2, and 3, which is regular business. We'll take Item K3, which is the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan, first of those three items. Then we'll do the Transportation Master Plan, and then K1, the Complete Streets Commission, third. So we're just going to reverse that order. That's still going to be a little later, but I wanted to announce that upfront, so if anyone's watching and feels the need to come down, they'll know when we're going to take these items. Okay. We're going to start with the study session on next steps of the, for the Water System Master Plan, Capital Improvement Plan. And city engineer Azelia Mitch will present. Good evening, Azelia. Nice to see you.
Azelia Mitch, city engineer. I'm here with our consultant, West Yost and West Yost Associates. Polly Bosavane has been our project manager on the Water System Master Plan, and she will be available at the end for any follow-up questions. So tonight, we are presenting to you the findings of the Water System Master Plan. We'll begin with a brief background of the water system, the objectives and scope of work of the master plan itself, an overview of the updates and feedback that we received from you throughout this process, the findings and recommendations, and the capital improvement plan, funding options, and the next steps and feedback. So as you know, we've been providing water to Menlo Park residents for over 66 years. And today, we serve about half of the city's population. The system consists of 55 miles, and we have a $13 million budget. We purchase approximately 2.8 million gallons of water from San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, and this water comes from Yosemite. So the scope of work for the Water System Master Plan was rather comprehensive. We have the final report here. You can see there's a lot that went into this effort. The objectives of the plan itself were to assess the existing and future water demands within our service area and to identify any system deficiencies. The task involved inventorying the water assets, looking at how we operate and maintain our system, and also it involved an assessment of our staffing levels. We looked at recycled, the opportunities for bringing in recycled water, and we evaluated the system based on its capacity, water quality, and condition of the system itself. From all of this, we were able to develop the 25-year capital improvement plan. So we have kept you updated throughout this effort, which has taken, you know, a little bit over two years. We provided an update on the recycled water assessment and also on the operational and maintenance review. We presented to you last year on the staffing level, staffing level assessment findings. During this time, we were able to really find out that we've been operating the system with very few staff members. We've been relying on three water operators to really take care of a system that is aging and that is rather large for the area. So in, as part of last year's budget, you all approved two new positions for the water system. And during that time, we were able to, we strategized and said that we would approach this in two phases: one, by adding, requesting the addition of two positions; and secondly, to reassess and figure out if, how many more positions we would need in the future. So the first task involved really assessing the assets. West Yost sent out crews. They took GPS readings of all the meters, all the valves, all the hydrants. Is the image up? No, thanks, thanks. And we went ahead and developed new maps. These maps are, you know, the system is underground, so a lot of the areas are complicated. And while these maps are not perfect, they are a huge improvement over what we had. We were able to note that half of our system consists of asbestos cement piping, and a lot of that is old. Much of it was built in between the 1960s and 1980s. Because of the high, many miles of asbestos cement pipe, the system is vulnerable and prone to failure. Asbestos cement piping breaks rather easily, and our water operators have to deal with about, you know, 24 emergencies and breaks on an annual basis. The system is live, you know. We rely on water 24/7 on weekends, nights. And so we have relied heavily on our three water operators to be on call. They have to be nearby, and they have to be fit and ready to respond to any sort of Because of the system's age, the fact that we have a lot of asbestos cement piping, and the fact that we've relied on three water operators, we haven't been able to be very proactive. Our maintenance approach has been very reactive. We fix things when they break, and this ends up being rather inefficient and costly. We have not been able to really implement best management practices that are more cost-effective in the long run. I know there's a lot on this table, but this is a table that we shared with you last year, which showed the ratios, a comparison of water connections per staff from neighboring agencies and agencies of similar size. And what you can see here is that the number of connections per staff for our system with three water operators was about 1,400. And this is much, much higher than other agencies. And it clearly indicated that these lower ratios, that we really, you know, have a staffing Thanks to you, you approved our Phase 1 approach of the staffing augmentation recommendations. And we were able to have two new water operators join the team earlier this year. This, as you can see, dropped that ratio down to 840, but we're still high in comparison. So we're here tonight to request that feedback on Phase 2, implementing the strategy that would add two additional staff positions to the water department. We're hoping to be able to have another water operator join the team, and also for an administrative position. We do a lot of regulatory compliance work. Every week, we have to develop water quality reports. We coordinate with developers. It's been a very busy time. We have developers calling in, requesting equipment frequently. And we also have a billing system that currently goes to Arizona, so we contract that out. And oftentimes, it's rather difficult for customers to get their answers, their questions answered. So by having an administrative position for the water department, we were able, we would be able to take these tasks from our water operators, and they would be able to focus on the system itself. In terms of the water system evaluation, our consultant looked at domestic and fire demand, water quality, capacity, and from that, they were able to develop, to look at the system deficiencies. They also looked at the age of the system, condition, materials, the vulnerability with respect to seismic activity, soil conditions, and then the stress. You know, the water systems see very high pressures, so they're under a lot of stress. And from that, they were able to develop a failure analysis. Both were used in the development of the capital improvement recommendations. What you see here are our findings on the fire flow capacity. There are many red dots up on the screen, and that means that we are having challenges here in terms of being able to deliver the required fire flow. Some areas have more problems than others. Circled up on your screen is the Life Sciences District. And what you can see here is that we basically do not have the ability to provide enough fire flow. We have been meeting with Facebook and Tarleton Properties regarding these challenges, and they have both agreed to fund a study to look at this area specifically and assess the improvement needs required to restore that capacity. The recommendation here from our consultant is to really increase the, for a number of improvements within this area, increase the pipe sizes, and also modify the system configuration. You know, while we live in a really beautiful area, it is an area that is seismically active. And one of the factors that is key in, while assessing a water system, is how it will respond to a seismic event. We do have a high probability that we will have a large magnitude earthquake occur in the near future. So part of the assessment included looking at the way that the system would respond, the age, material, the soil conditions. And from that, West Yost developed a risk assessment. It's a little bit hard to see on the figure, but they were able to designate each pipe segment in terms of risk level. As you can see here, we have a lot of red and oranges, and these indicate segments that have a high likelihood of failure. And those are segments that we, that are of high concern to us. It is, the problem is systematic. We have more than half of the piping segments that are prone to failure. And the recommendation here is to increase our pipeline replacement program. We have been, in the past, spending around $600,000 a year, and the recommendation is to increase that to 1.8 million. We do have storage in the Upper Zone. We have two reservoirs that serve Slack and Sharon Heights. The recommendation here is to conduct a seismic evaluation of the structures and also replace that roof on Reservoir Number 2. We have limited access to the roof itself. It is in poor condition and in need of replacement. So while a lot of the improvements focused on capital, you know, major capital improvements, our consultant also evaluated ways in which we can improve the efficiency of the system. And one of those projects involves the installation of an advanced metering system. So we currently contract out our meter reads. We have one contractor who walks the system on a monthly basis, and he manually reads every meter. That means that if you are within our service area, you get that bill every month. And so we're unable to detect any leaks that may happen in a timely manner. This is also leads to errors and a lot of customer complaints. So we are exploring the possibility of implementing a program that would automate the meter reads. And this would be a radio-based system where we could access the data on either hourly, depending on the system itself, either hourly or weekly, but much more frequent than what we currently have right now. This would help us detect leaks. It would really save us money every time, you know, any, every gallon of water that we lose is water that we cannot sell, but that we have paid to purchase. So overall, the 25-year capital improvement plan, it was, amounts to $90 million. Our consultant was able to categorize this based on priorities. So some of the projects have a very high priority. Some of them are high, and some of them are medium. They're all important and must be addressed over the next 25 years. Given that we are in the middle of working on our budget, we focused on looking at those very high and high priority projects that we could implement over the next five years. So we're focusing on being able to really ramp up our piping replacement program, and that involves increasing that budget to 1.8 million. We also have to think about emergency planning. We currently have interconnections with some of our neighbors, but not all. And we're exploding, exploring the feasibility of potentially interconnecting with the city of Palo Alto, and also putting in new interconnections with Cal Water. We are in the process of exploring locations for a second emergency well, and also looking at implementing improvements so that we can improve the water quality of the water we deliver. We do need to replace that roof on Reservoir Number 2. And we have to address the fire capacity issues that we were able to identify in the Life Sciences District. In terms of efficiency gains, we're looking at implementing an asset management program and the metering, the changes to the metering system so that they can be automated. So over the next five years, we looked at these top, you know, priority projects and have a $29 million proposed budget. So this problem is, you know, not new. A lot of investment went into public water systems in the 60s. And the American Society of Civil Engineers, I'm a big fan, so I always have to put them up, has given our water systems a D. We have, and this means that a lot of investment is needed so that we can continue to provide safe drinking water. That also means we have to get creative with our financing and explore other options. We have relied heavily on a pay-as-you-go model, which means that we use our water rates to fund our capital improvement needs. And as you can see from this graph, our rates are low. They're in the medium-to-low range, and definitely lower than some of our neighbors. These rates, you know, while low, are inadequate to really fund what improvements are needed. As part of our water rate study a few years ago, we included a budget of 6.9 million. And now, we're really looking at a needed budget of 29 million. And that means that we can't rely on rates itself. That would not be, it would not be feasible to put that impact on the water service, you know, on customers. So we need a, we need a strategy that looks at other financing options. And we need to focus on being able to continue to provide this water service to residents, you know, with a system that is reliable and not prone to so much failure. So we're proposing, you know, given that we are a water enterprise, we're proposing that we evaluate the issuance of water revenue bonds. We're proposing that we look at loans. The state has the revolving fund, which offers 20-year financing at pretty low rates, currently 1.7. There are a number of opportunities for grants. A few weeks ago, you all supported Proposition 68, which, if passed, might make 1.9 billion dollars in grants available. And we're also exploring the option of looking at maybe the development of a financing district, particularly to address the system deficiencies that we were able to discover in the Life Sciences District. And that makes sense for areas that are localized and that just have greater infrastructure needs than the rest of the service area. So our next steps, we would like to implement Phase 2 of the staff augmentation strategy. This would help us really implement the best management practices that we have been unable to do with a staff of three. By adding another water operator, we would be more in alignment with our neighbors. And with an administrative position, we would be able to really take some of those administrative tasks from our water operators so they could focus on maintaining the system. We are proposing to evaluate other financing models, which include, you know, looking at revenue bonds and grants, and also partnerships with our private developers. And we're hoping to be able to do this so that we can continue to provide customers with a reliable source of water. I really like to thank West Yost and Associates. We've been able to work very closely together for the, over the past two and a half years. They've really put a master plan together that we'll be able to rely on for quite a while. And I would really like to thank you for all the support you've given us over the past two years, and can take any questions and feedback.
Great, thank you very much, Azelia. I forgot to mention earlier when we introduced our new city clerk that if anyone would like to speak on an item this evening, there is speaker cards at the back tables. Please feel free to fill out those cards and provide the cards to Judy over on the right. So I don't know if anyone would like to speak on this item. Okay, great. Katie, why don't you?
I'm sorry, front item.
No, the later item, okay, great.
I was waiting for G, but you're still on that.
So I don't know, I don't see on our screen, do we have any speakers?
I do too. I hate having to talk about.
We have to go back to the agenda.
Yeah, but we don't have any speaker cards on this particular item, correct? All right. So, let's see. So, let's bring it back up here. Kirsten.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for your presentation on this important topic. I serve on the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency for the city of Menlo Park also, and, you know, providing a safe, reliable amount of water at a fair price is exactly what we need to do. And I appreciate the recommendations that you've brought forward. Of course, we can't do this on our ratepayers. Your recommendation of 29 million is going to require some sort of other public financing. I completely agree. And I like your chart that you showed about how many connections we have versus how many staff people. And so it seems very clear that we probably need some more staff to help with our water system and make sure that it's safe. With the public financing, are you looking for feedback also on the financing?
Yes.
Right. I mean, I think the things that you've brought forward, the 20-year financing at 1.7%, that's something to look at, obviously. And I like the idea of a finance district. I know you're working with Tarleton and other property owners in the Life Sciences to look at this. And then you talked about, in the report, a study being done for the Life Sciences area. When would that commence?
We are actually working on developing that agreement right now. The scope of work is developed, and once those are signed, our consultant is ready to go.
And how long do you anticipate that could take?
Maybe, maybe two, a few months.
Oh, I'm surprised.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm used to these taking a lot longer, actually. So you think a couple of months, and then you'll, that, the 29 million that you're suggesting doesn't include whatever comes out of this Life Sciences study?
So it does. So it does include the fire capacity, yes. So if we were to create a financing district, that 29 million dollars would be reduced.
All right. And then just remind us also with the Prop 68, it's 1.19 billion, but it's broken down by population, right?
Yes.
So what would Menlo Park look at annually?
So I don't know. It depends on whether it gets passed, but I can certainly follow up.
If it were to pass, though, if it were to pass, what would we be looking at?
I would have to get back to you.
Okay. Because it is, it's, every city gets something, but it's based on the population of your city.
Yes.
And that's how they made it, you know, as something that every city would want to support. So the public financing options, definitely, I think it's really important that we move forward on this. And then the other thing I wanted to ask you about was just the emergency well. We've been looking and talking about a second emergency well for years. And I don't remember if it was four years ago or three years ago where you brought, maybe it wasn't you, Azelia, it might have been your predecessor, forward different options for locations. And I thought we had narrowed it down to a few.
Yes. So we, so the timing of the Water System Master Plan actually also helped with, in looking at those potential locations in terms of what would make better sense. We have been, so Justin Murphy, our Public Works Director, has been in discussions with the Fire District. They just purchased land from St. Patrick's Seminary, and we're looking at that location for potentially a second well.
Okay, and that's new since it was presented? That location would be a new location since we?
It was, it was part of the, it was part of the original assessment, but it is, it is actually a good location for the system itself, especially as we evaluated the hydraulics of the water system.
Okay. And now that it's privately owned by the Fire District, then there's?
We may have an opportunity.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. Is that, do you have any other questions for me, or do you have enough?
No, but I will clarify the Proposition 68, yeah.
Oh, thank you. I would like to know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Mueller.
So, it's an excellent report. It's also frankly, a little disturbing. Can we apportion the utility tax, Bill?
What do you mean by apportion?
So the issue that I'm trying to debate is that we have this unused utility tax that was approved by voters. This is a utility. But the problem is that it doesn't cover the entire city. So my question is, can we take a portion, and because it only serves a certain portion of the city, could we go ahead and implement the utility tax, but then take a portion, a percentage of that toward this project, and then somehow use the other portion of that utility tax to serve those other residents? Because if I'm a resident in an area that's not served by the Water District, I'm thinking, great, I'm paying more taxes, but for what?
Yeah. I mean, we could certainly look at the concept of imposing the higher utility user tax within the Menlo Park Water District, and then allocating those funds for this purpose. I mean, we'd have to look at whether we can do that on a, just a portion of the city.
Yeah, so the one, so that wasn't included is the financing. So, the one, so that wasn't included is the financing, as a financing vehicle in the staff report. I think we should look at it because the voters have already approved it specifically for utilities, which is, that's what this is, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, the money's not devoted to utilities, but that's how it's collected.
Right.
Counselmember Carlton.
So, I also took note of the, the wells to be drilled because I was on Parks and Rec Commission when that came forward. And I just want to say, if we can put it on either St. Patrick's Seminary land or the newly acquired fire station land, great, because I already had a phone call from someone that lives off of Middle who's concerned that we're going to look at drilling in the park again. And that is not a popular option. So, I encourage us where we can to, to look at those other options. The asbestos in the pipe, the lead mentioned, the actions to make sure that the lead doesn't get in the water, yeah, this is something we definitely need to do. Is there any risk to residents at this point from asbestos or lead or any of the things?
No, we have not found any risk. The asbestos is contained. It's actually more of a risk when things fail, but actually to the workers handling the piping, but not really to the water quality itself. In terms of lead, we have been doing an inventory of, you know, back in the eighties, a lot of the fittings that were used had a high, high lead content. And luckily, we have been proactive and a lot of those have been phased out. So, we haven't found any lead service fittings in our system as of yet, which is good news. But we are currently in the process of making an inventory.
Okay. Well, we've seen from other cities, it's always good to be proactive in making sure that we keep testing and, and make sure that we have that safety. If you put up the slide, please, it shows where the fire flow capacity issues are. It seemed like that wasn't the whole area of the city that-
Oh, yes. I included, you're absolutely right. This only shows the, the lower and high pressure zone. It doesn't include the upper zone. We, we found some of the red dots that you, that you see in the areas where we have dead ends. Some of them, the fire flow capacity was actually pretty close. So, we didn't find any concerns in the upper zone. The concerns were really in this area and in the life sciences district.
Okay. Because as I look at this, if I lived on Coleman, I would wonder why there's a line of red dots down my street. And just to make sure that we have looked at that and those are safe, that's next on our list of what we're addressing. What about the other areas where there are little clusters?
Yes. So, there are improvements recommended, for example, for this campus and in other parts of town. I was just trying to show that we have a constant, a cluster of issues in the life sciences. But yes, the master plan does recommend improvements throughout the zone.
Okay. So, this is just area one and the other ones will be done next time?
Yeah. So, for the upper zone, we really didn't find any deficiencies. So, most of the fire problems are actually here in the zone.
I thought the red dots showed deficiencies.
Yes. On, so the, the upper zone, meaning Sharon Heights, I don't, I didn't show that figure here. For this zone, yes. So, this figure doesn't show the improvements needed to make those dots go away. But we do have that in the master plan.
But we won't be addressing them.
Yes. They will, they are part of the 25-year plan.
Okay, that's fine. My, my other concern, as we do all these things, is the, the dig-once philosophy. As we dig these up, we need to, if we're not going to be pulling the, the electrical cables at that point, if there are any in the area that need to go, we need to put in the conduit. We need to make sure that we're not digging it up once for water and then putting it down and then it gets dug up three years later for something else. And do we have a dig-once policy or does council need to bring that back to make sure that we don't? Because it's, it's a big deal when you live in a neighborhood or you're driving and everything gets torn up. And it's expensive. It's, it's a waste of good tax dollars. So, do we have a dig-once policy that we're going to follow?
So, we, we really appreciate that comment because we are working rather hard on coordinating with other utilities. For example, West Bay, Cal Water, we have our street resurfacing program. And we definitely are sensitive to the residents. You know, it, it makes no sense to be in an area a number of times. We do have, we do have a, a policy on a moratorium. Once a street is resurfaced, we basically don't allow utilities to go back and dig that area up again. But we're trying to be a lot more proactive and we're trying to coordinate with our, with our, of the other utility providers so that this problem, you know, does not happen. So, we definitely understand that and we're working on the coordination front.
Maybe, do we have a checklist?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, when we work on our house, we have our checklist of where we contact the different utilities and make sure we know where they are. And do we do that also?
Yes, we are revamping our system.
Okay.
And, and we're having, we actually now have monthly coordination meetings with West Bay Sanitary and Cal Water.
And PG&E?
Excuse me?
And PG&E as well?
And PG&E as well. We just had one with them last, last week.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Counselmember Klein.
Thank you for, this is a lot of work, so thank you, the consulting team and for delivering the presentation. I only have, I think, about three or four questions. And, and it's, it's really just relative to the presentation itself because I think there are a lot more going on and, and you pulled out highlights. So, you know, demand-side management programs, it's ongoing. But in this five-year CPI kind of budget, you didn't pull it out. So, is it, it's just an ongoing cost that's already been evaluated and, and budgeted for those types of programs? It's really, it's, it's demand-side. So, you're trying to educate, you're trying to get people to use less water, it's kind of-
Yes, our conservation, right.
Yeah.
And, and the conservation effort is led out of our sustainability group. And they do, they coordinate with Basca. There are conservation programs, the Lawn Begone program, for example, that really focuses on getting that potable demand off. A lot of the conservation efforts rebound, right? Oftentimes, people think we're doing okay. Like this year, we think we're doing okay. So, there's a big focus on making that permanent.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, the wastewater collection type of programs or ground, you know, the, it's the treatment, the recycling, regional recycling and gray water type of stuff. I didn't see it in the five-year, but it's probably longer term?
Yes. The, the, our challenge, well, two really great things. The, we have been, we're continuing to meet with Palo Alto, for example. They are in the process of finishing up a market study and we met with them a few weeks ago. They are looking at expanding into East Palo Alto and also potentially, you know, having us as a customer for recycled water. We did, we have met with, with Redwood City. And also, as part of the general plan, we are now requiring that some large buildings recycle on-site. And Facebook will be, even though they were, they volunteered for this, they actually weren't subject to the general plan requirements, but they are in the process of building their recycled water facility on-site. So, we'll have that, it's a long process because the commissioning will take a while, but that's actually getting built right now.
Okay. And those were just weren't pulled out, but they're, they're part of the cost?
So, they, so those are programs.
Right.
And, but yes, you're absolutely right in terms of a regional recycled water program, it's a longer-term effort.
And then, with the golf course, remind me, they have their own pipe they're running and they're, they were going to include Slack. They were thinking about reaching out to Slack also to share that. And I didn't know if there was any progress on that or if that's something we're going to have to share some costs with or have, take advantage of and pay.
So, we, we did enter into memorandum of understand, actually, it was, I think it was a, yeah, an MOU. They don't, I was thinking maybe an MOA. But they, they actually started on that project. They have a contractor onboard and they will begin putting in a forced main and building the treatment plant at the golf course.
Okay.
Yes. So, we are working with them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add a, a couple of comments and questions. First of all, very much appreciate the, the hard work and doing the capital infrastructure planning that I think is, is pretty necessary. When I look at the 29 million and, and the discussion about, I mean, we definitely need the pipe replacement, definitely need the seismic retrofit, the emergence, second emergency well, also the advanced water meters. All of those make a lot of sense. Tomorrow is the, USGS will be announcing their haywired earthquake scenario. And one of the big vulnerabilities is the water distribution system, not on the hetch hetchy side, but out in the communities. And so, it's getting it out to the neighborhoods. And so, replacing water mains, I think is a, is certainly, I would concur, is a very high priority. I would, so now, the question is, how do you finance that, right? You know, certainly, I would run, not walk, to the Safe Drinking Water State revolving fund and Prop One, given that they are 1.7% rate for 20 years. I don't think you can get, issue a bond for anywhere near that. I think it's probably at least four, four-plus percent interest. So, if you can get financing at 1.7% for infrastructure, I think that would be just ideal to help do that. I did see and very much noticed this, and perhaps this helps to, to explain some of the discrepancy between our rates and, for example, Cal Water rates. I know we just approved a rate study, but this certainly makes, makes a strong justification to, I think, ratepayers that we need to make some capital improvements in the system and, and may need to increase rates over the coming years. I do think, so about 12 years ago, when the San Francisco PUC started on their hetch hetchy, what is it, WISP, the Water Infrastructure Seismic Something or Other-
Program.
-plan, they did a pretty good job of explaining out to all the ratepayers the, the need for, you know, for increasing rates in order to, to fund that program. And we're now, you know, fairly far along, right, through, in that. And I think we, we're all going to benefit from a more resilient hetch hetchy system. So, I do think we can explain to ratepayers that in the area of seismic retrofitting, pipe replacement, all of that, I think, help to justify it. So, I think we can, we can help figure out a financing plan. Bill, I wanted to ask you a question about, so a water bond, is that, is that something that, that we, we go to voters for approval on or because it's, or is it because it's part of the utility? Is that a little different? How does that work?
So, I'm not 100% certain offhand, but it would only be, it wouldn't go to the voters. It would only go to the district, the users, because it would only be an assessment on the water users. And so, I don't know if it's a, we're going to do this and is there a protest provision or if it requires a vote or approval. It, it's likely to be subject to one or the other procedure and I just don't know off the top of my head.
Okay. Great. So, I also think, Alex, if, if, I'd like to share this report with the Finance Audit Committee because one of the things that the Finance Audit Committee is going to be doing is looking at infrastructure replacement. And so, this would be a good report for them to have an understanding of it as we're looking at capital infrastructure financing for the city overall. So, but anyway, again, you know, support, very much appreciate the study. I think now the key is figuring out, how do we, how do we proceed on to that 29 million project? I'm assuming that the additional staff that's been requested for this next fiscal year will be covered within the, the revenues coming in for the utility. So, it's not, it's, it's not something that's going to affect the, the general fund budget, but is handled within the water utility revenue fund, correct?
Yes, correct. They would come out of our operating budget within the water fund.
Okay, got it. So, what I would certainly recommend and at some point, when you're ready to come back, this sort of strategy of, of, both in terms of, you know, financing, because there are going to be different phases, right? And, and the timing of, of doing some of these things, what type of financing tools? And then, a, a strategy about, about how we communicate that to ratepayers in the future. I think that would be, that, better to do that earlier rather than later, so. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Now, we'll proceed to Item G, Public Comment. Under Public Comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under Public Comment for a limit of three minutes. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda. And therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under Public Comment other than to provide general information. We have a couple of speakers. Our first speaker is Ann Crabe, followed by Chris DeCarty.
Thank you very much. I have had the pleasure of serving on the Finance Committee for the past few years. And apparently, I'm not very good at keeping records because I was recently informed by the city that my term is up and that I have served enough time and it's time for someone else to, to take over. And so, I just wanted to come this evening to thank you all for the opportunity to serve, say it's really been a pleasure and a great opportunity to learn a lot about how the city works. I also wanted to take a moment to do something I don't think you hear enough of, which is to really compliment the staff that serves the Finance Committee. I think right now, you have a really exceptional staff in Nick and Dan and Brandon. They do a great job. It's really heartening as a taxpayer to see that not only are they extremely knowledgeable, but they all have a really great attitude and clearly want to do a good job. So, that, that I think is, is really nice to see. There's a lot coming down the pike right now in finance. And I'll have to say, I'm going to credit staff and not anything having to do with any leadership that I've shown. And certainly, Mr. Mayor, you've brought forward a lot of good issues and, and brought to our attention that we need to spend a little bit more time on some strategic planning. And so, that brings me to the last issue, which is, given that I didn't know that I was about to roll off and there was a vacancy, I'm not sure that a lot of other people knew either. And I dug in a little bit and it's kind of far down on the city's website. And we have a lot of people, members of the public, who have made a point of coming to the meetings and are really engaged. And I'm not sure that they're aware either that vacancies are coming up. So, I just wanted to say that I believe applications were actually due last week. I'm not sure if you got any. If you didn't, I would encourage you to publicize it a little bit more. There are some really enthusiastic members of the public who could bring a lot to the committee. And again, wrapping up, just saying thank you.
Well, thank you, Ann. Very much appreciate your volunteerism and service on the, on the committee. Chris DeCarty, followed by Ann Eisenberg. Hey, Chris, good evening.
Thank you. It's good to be here. I'm going to follow a little in Ann's footsteps. I'm here tonight because tomorrow marks the end of my two terms serving on the Environmental Quality Commission. You all, all five of you were there and appointed me. And I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to serve. And I also wanted to thank the staff. And similarly, to Ann, I think the staff that has served the Environmental Quality Commission for the entire time I've been there, especially Rebecca, who was there at the beginning and is now here at the end of my term, they've been terrific to work with. They've been diligent and they've been caring and they've made that work enjoyable and I think valuable. With the vantage point of many years of service, I also wanted to point out for you all what I think are two really great opportunities before you in the coming year. The first is on heritage trees. I have been through many, many heritage tree appeals now. People care deeply about trees in this community. They show up when it's rainy and cold outside. And while it's well-meaning, the policy simply doesn't work. It's confusing. It is unfair. It applies to different situations differently. And there is no real enforcement. That policy's been in place since I started. You have an opportunity to address those issues- You have an opportunity to address those issues and to help improve it. It will make life in the community better, it will help residents get along better, it'll make your Environmental Quality Commission work better, so I encourage you to do that. The second area I want to point to is on climate change, and on this one, I want to say congratulations and keep going. It was now about five years ago, you all were here, we pressed you and worked with you as Environmental Quality Commission, and you stood up and did the first goal for this city on climate change pollution reductions, 27% by 2020 from 2005 levels. And at the time you took that vote, it took courage, and I know it, because you said it did, and you told us on the Environmental Quality Commission that we needed to step up and support you all in the city in meeting that goal, and we've done that, we've worked hard as a commission, and several of us have worked hard as residents to put in place supports to make that happen. The key lesson I want to stress from this is that we are going to reach that goal more than likely, and the opportunity for you is to set the next phase goal, and to learn from that experience that actually setting an ambitious goal isn't really a vote of courage, it's a vote of optimism and opportunity, because the path for sustainability for our community is through addressing climate change, is through getting ahead of the clean energy transition, and that will make your lives easier, and will help address a bunch of the stuff that you're going to be looking at tonight and on future agendas going forward. Mostly, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve, I've learned a lot, I've loved getting to know more residents, I appreciate it, and I hope you can take and work with the next EQC to address these issues going forward.
Chris, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your service on the EQC.
I just want to say thank you to both of you, to Ann and to Chris, really, I mean, time flies, and you guys have been terrific, so thanks so much, and I know you'll stay engaged and involved, but really appreciate your personal time.
Getting a little teary-eyed here, anyway, but thank you, sincerely. Ann Eisenberg, followed by Steve Van Pelt.
Hi, I'm Ann Eisenberg, I'm a downtown Menlo Park resident, and I also work at the Peninsula Volunteers Meals on Wheels, and I just wanted to invite you all and the community to attend our dine-out event, it's on Tuesday, May 1st. You go to restaurants, and they are, the participating restaurants are donating 10% of their proceeds to Meals on Wheels, and it's a great opportunity to eat out, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and Meals on Wheels, what we do there is we provide hot meals for over 400 people a day, and that's in San Mateo County, from Menlo Park all the way down, all the way up to South San Francisco. We also provide eyes, so friendly eyes who check in on these residents and make sure that they're okay. So it's really worthwhile, and I hope everybody will join us on Tuesday, May 1st, and I'm also going to be selling raffle tickets, if anybody's interested, after the meeting, so thank you.
Thank you, Ann, and I hope you're going to put those on the back table, great.
Ann, would you mind just saying, I know it's lunch and dinner, but breakfast too?
Yes, breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner. You could do all three meals out.
Tuesday, May 1st. All right, Steve Van Pelt, followed by Katie Baruzzi. Good evening, Steve.
Hello, I'm Steve Van Pelt, a resident of Menlo Park for longer than I care to remember. I heard the tail end of the 5:00 meeting, and there was a conversation about shoe fly tracks, and it made me go back and think about when they put in the grade separations at Fifth Avenue, and also at Jefferson and Redwood City, and you remember where they ran the shoe fly track then? It's a trick question, they were both done without a shoe fly track. If we don't move the tracks, it's still possible to do this with Alternative A. Where we are now, we are moving the tracks to put in a center platform. If we just left the platform the way it is, we wouldn't have to move the tracks, so I think you really need to give some direction. I really believe this would account for just about half of the expense of Project A. And since we've started all this discussion of grade separations, we now have to do about twice as many as we did when we started, don't we, because there's going to be something happening on the Dunbarton Corridor that's going to involve really important intersections and separation with rail and things. So I believe it can be done, and I think you should direct staff to figure out a way to do Alternative A without a shoe fly track. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Katie Baruzzi, followed by Greg Conlin.
Hey, guys. I know it's going to be a long night, so I'll try to be brief here. I'm here representing Parents for Safe Routes, and this weekend, in honor of Earth Day and to support the Menlo Park Education Foundation, we have sponsored an activity for 4th and 5th graders. It's going to be happening at 9:00 AM, and we would love to invite council members to join. So the activity is basically a bike training, it's co-sponsored by Menlo Velo and by Parents for Safe Routes, and we're going to be taking 10 4th and 5th graders from Hillview, down Santa Cruz, through town, along the Oak Grove Bike Route, down to Burgess Park, to Cafe Zoe, and then back to council chambers, and we're going to be working with them on best practices for using the streets, for integrating with traffic, for when they need to take the lane, how to signal, there's going to be a scavenger hunt element, they're going to be collecting swag along the way, including bike bells, and lights, and water bottles, and what we would really love to do is have some council members show up on bikes, ideally, to join them for part of this journey, and what we're hoping is that some of you will show up at Cafe Zoe. You can come for any of it, but we're going to be leaving Cafe Zoe at around 11:15, and aiming to be back here by about 11:45. That's where parents are going to meet them, and we're going to do a debrief, and answer questions, and tell parents if their bikes are too small, and all of that kind of stuff. It would be so great if you could come. There are a few reasons why. First of all, I just think it will be exciting for the kids, you know, if like the mayor and council members show up. Second of all, and this is just personal, I think it's, you guys are making really important decisions about bike networks throughout the town, and it's really helpful to see it through the eyes of a 10-year-old. So what does it look like to cross Middlefield when you're 10 years old? What does it look like to, you know, to go through town, knowing that there are bike lanes in some places, but not in others? Like, how do you manage all this stuff? You know, what are 10-year-olds capable of? What are they not so capable of? And how can we make this safer for them, knowing that when they're 11 or 12, they're going to be having to ride this ride every day, often both ways, to get to Hillview? So I will send you guys details, so that you don't have to write them down now, but please do join us. Thank you, and thank you for all the support that you provide.
Katie, it starts at 9:00 at Hillview?
Yes. We're rolling from 9:00 at Hillview, and it's a three-hour thing, you certainly shouldn't feel responsible for being there for all of it, and I can email you all, and you can let me know which parts you might want to jump in for.
Okay, great. So I did check with my wife, and I have my kids alone, can they crash it?
Let me check with, I think, I think for part, sorry?
They don't, they won't take any swag, but I don't have a, I don't have a signal.
Yeah, yeah, let me check in with Wallison, she's my boss for this thing, but I, you know, I don't see, yeah, maybe.
Thanks, Katie. Greg Conlin.
Yeah.
Greg, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. I want to speak about Ravenswood Intersection. I've spent 20 years on this issue. I started on the California Public Utility Commission in 1993, and in 1996, when I was president, there were 20 deaths on the Caltrain's track while I was president, and I was not happy camper, and I wanted to do everything I could to help it, I raised a million dollars for fencing, and at that time, and got some of the most critical, unsafe, taken, taken care of with fencing, but it was not enough. It would have required 20 million to do it right, and I was not successful. But I looked at the, when they had the first sessions 10 years ago on how to address the high-speed rail coming through, you know, I spent days with the Palo Alto Group, looking at what it would cost to put the train in the trench, and other alternatives, but the trench was the primary one, and I, I remember the cost was $25,000 a foot. Now, I haven't done my math tonight, and I should have, but I know that 2.5 billion for Palo Alto and Menlo is way above that. We built, when I, not only was I on the Public Service Commission, but I was on the California Transportation Commission, and at that time, we authorized, and they built a 20-mile trench from the port of Long Beach to downtown LA, for a billion and a half dollars. So inflation is high, but I don't think it's that high. So to pay 2.5 to 3 billion is a number I saw in one of your documents recently, and I just think that's totally out of line. I think if you went out to bid, you could get that thing done for a lot less. How much, I don't know, but I'm just saying that I think the numbers you're working with are way out of line as to what's realistic, especially if you let foreign bidders come in and bid, that, you know, the cost, if you took Palo Alto from, you know, San Antonio all the way to Fifth Avenue in Redwood City, and I just can't imagine it would cost any more than $2 billion. And I just think that's what, that's the 50,000-foot view to really solve the problems, because if you don't restrict access throughout the system, not just at the intersections, you're still going to have the risk of killing a lot of people every year. Right now, you're doing 10 or 15 a year, it's the most dangerous railroad in the United States, it's pathetic. And, you know, if you look at other issues that we're dealing with on a national basis, and you say 10 or 15 people get killed every year, something would happen, and I just don't know why, in this community of Palo Alto, Menlo, Atherton, that somebody hasn't raised to the occasion to solve it. I would recommend a trench for all that distance at less than $2 billion. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any other speaker cards? All right, I, let's see, I don't think we have any commission reports. We have on our consent calendar this evening only two items. I wanted to just look around and see if there are any that want to be polled.
I have a question about I-1.
Okay, Councilmember Carlton, if you want to go ahead and ask your question on I-1.
Sure. Last week was a full week for me, I was at the League of Cities End, I was at the Progress Seminar, and at both places, I heard people talking about the missing middle, and talking about how people that earn just above what is considered to be moderate for BMR, teachers, people that, firefighters, emergency workers. And so then I was really interested, when I looked at this, and I saw what we had before and what we're putting forward, and we, suddenly, 120% of median disappeared. And so I did some look, some research into why this disappeared, and I found out that the county considers 120% of median moderate income, and then I found out the state considers 120%, and HUD, the feds, everyone else considers 120% median. Apparently, what's considered to be the missing middle is above that, it's like 130. And I found it interesting that Menlo Park alone caps it as 110. So we're creating an even larger missing middle than anyone else, and I put it forward that this is something that maybe we should look into, so that we make ourselves more in line with everyone else as we move forward with the BMR housing.
Okay.
So that we're more consistent across the board.
So are you suggesting that we pass it, but then revisit it later to address that, or are you asking?
I don't think we're set up to address this subject right now.
Correct.
It hasn't been agendized, and all that, but I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention.
Okay.
That this is an issue, and that we are the outliers in how we define median income.
Okay. Fair enough.
And so I would suggest we bring it back at some point.
Okay, got it.
But for now, this is good.
Okay, great. Councilmember Klein?
I'll say, I agree that it should be evaluated, and we should take a hard look at it, if we're, if we're out of the norm, we need to correct that. For now, I was just going to move to approve the two items, and then, and I'm with you though, I think we should evaluate it, so I'll make that motion.
Okay, so, and Councilmember Klein, you are making a motion on both?
Both.
Both?
I-1 and I-2.
Is there a?
I don't see the button to second. Sorry, the button to second isn't there.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it either.
I seconded it, but I don't have a button to push.
Okay, council?
Oh, there we go, I have second.
Right. Great, thank you. All right, now we'll go to public hearing, we have two public hearing items, the, the first one, J-1, is to receive input on the final five-district map, and election sequencing, and introduction, and first reading of an ordinance amending Municipal Code, Chapter 2.04, City Council Title II, administration personnel to establish a district-based electoral system, and to adopt a map describing the boundaries of each district. Assistant City Attorney Kara Silver, there she is, made your way up, thank you, will make the presentation. Good evening, Kara.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm here to present the introduction of the District Elections Ordinance. So by way of brief background, as you recall, on October 4th, the City Council adopted a resolution of intent to transition from their existing at-large election system to a by-district election system. And that was initiated by a letter from Attorney Kevin Shankman, who had, just get this situated here, who had claimed that the city's existing at-large voting system violated the California Voting Rights Act. Sorry for the technical difficulties here. So then, on December 12th, the City Council adopted a resolution establishing an advisory districting committee to make recommendations on a five-district map and a six-district map, and also to make a recommendation regarding election sequencing. On January 19th, the Advisory Districting Committee was impaneled, and between January and February of this year, the districting committee met eight times and conducted eight public hearings on the council's direction. Finally, on February 22nd, the Advisory Districting Committee came up with its final recommendation, which was published, and the final recommendation related to both five-district map and a six-district map as directed by the council, but the committee did state that they preferred the five-district map. On March 21st, which was your last hearing, the City Council selected the map unanimously that had been recommended by the Advisory Districting Committee, and directed staff to come back with an ordinance implementing a five-district election system. So in terms of the map that the districting committee recommended, and that the council also is moving forward, it divides the city into five districts. The principles underlying the boundaries of the districts are, of course, in conformance with the California Voting Rights Act, and also in conformance with criteria that had been put forth by the council, and by additional criteria established by the districting committee. One of the major criteria was that each district needs to have an equal population, it's obviously roughly an equal population. The committee felt it was important that the deviation between the smallest district and the largest district was no more than 10%, so that the map would be deemed constitutional under federal Voting Rights Act law. The divisions with, in, between the districts were largely along major streets, the individual districts were compact, and they kept the various neighborhoods intact. One of the major feedback that we received from the community was that they wanted their individual recognized neighborhoods, including the Bell Haven neighborhood, to be intact, rather than dividing it between different districts. The one exception The one exception was the downtown El Camino Real commercial area. We heard, we heard feedback and testimony that it, because it was such a large area and because of the commercial interests historically in that area, that it would be good to have two council members or more representing that district, and the district was ultimately split between districts three and four. With respect to the sequencing, the districting committee recommended that in 2018, that three districts be up for election, and those districts would be District One, which was the, is the Bell Haven District, District Two, and District Four. And then in 2020, the remaining two districts, District Three and District Five, would have their elections. The ordinance, as I mentioned, implements the recommendations by the committee. It establishes a by-district election process in Menlo Park. It designates the five districts that were recommended by the committee and incorporates the committee's map into the ordinance. The ordinance also codifies the interim and permanent election sequence. And per state law, the incumbents remain as at-large, as at-large council members until their term expires. Once your term expires, you then are entitled to run for a district seat within the district that you reside. The ordinance also states that it is implemented in furtherance of the California Voting Rights Act. That declaration is necessary to take advantage of the safe harbor that we have discussed in the past. It also allows you to transition from an at-large system to a by-district election by a council-voted ordinance rather than going to the voters on this. And then finally, the ordinance states that if a council member moves from a district and the seat, the seat becomes vacant unless the council member relocates and establishes another residence within that district within 30 days. And that is a codification of state law. With respect to the remaining process for transitioning, we will, if the ordinance passes tonight, we will come back to you on April 24th with a, with a second reading of the ordinance. And then on May 1st, we will deliver the final map to the county registrar. And then July 16th through August 10th is the candidate filing period, and that's where the candidates for the first three district elections, districts one, two, and four, may start pulling papers to file, but they must reside within the district at the time that they pull their papers. Then, and as I mentioned, in 2018, we will have the first district election, and then in November 20, we will have, 2020, we will have the district elections for the remaining two districts. So what we are asking for you, from you tonight, is to open a public hearing and receive the input from the public, to introduce the ordinance that is attached as Exhibit A to your staff report, and to then make, finding that this action is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Kara. Appreciate it. We, oh, I will now open the public hearing. We do have, we do have a speaker, Pamela Jones. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki, Vice Mayor Mueller, council members, as well as staff. And I'm so excited because I'm going to be able to be home by nine o'clock tonight. I couldn't, I couldn't help myself. And, and, and this is actually will be the last time that I will say anything about districting, but I have to, you know, do this one last piece. And, and that is, again, you know, I have to say thank you. It's been an excellent process, and I think it's been really good for the city. Look at the number of people that applied for the commissions, and there was quite a few commission openings at this time. There, with this whole process, there wasn't really a best practice for how to do the sequencing. There were some rules you had to go by, but there wasn't anything that really said, how can we do this in a way that's in the best interest of the city as a whole? So as I said at the last hearing, I'd like to consider the issues, you know, consider the issues that affect the city as a whole, and then take the most critical ones and say it, these are the districts in which the, that those issues are involved. And so I think I gave you an example, but I'll reiterate it. But when we look at traffic on Willow Road, Bay Road, Middlefield, and the San Francisco Creek area, that affects District Two. Traffic on Willow, Middlefield, El Camino, and Ravenswood avenues affects District Three. District Four is affected by Santa Cruz. There's our traffic. Both Districts Three and Four include portions of the downtown specific plan, and District Three includes the rail crossing, Burgess Park, and the main library, all where there are major issues that we are now involved in and things that we're going to have to make decisions on during the next two years. So again, just wanted to reiterate, you know, let's look at where the issues lie that are most critical, that we're going to be working on during the next two years, and think in terms of the city as a whole and what those best practices are. Again, I want to thank you because regardless of what your final decision is, this was an excellent process, and I think that we all learned really what a participatory government looks like. So thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Are there any other speaker cards? Okay. All right. Do we have a motion and sec?
Actually, I have.
Okay. Great. Couple cards coming up. Well, let's see. I don't know who is first. Greg, do you want to come up and then Betsy?
I, I kind of like to book in. I came in at the beginning, now I'm here at the end. But I just, I want to repeat what I said at the beginning. I'm not sure that you remember what I said, but I'm not sure I remember what I said. But I think the main thrust of my comments is, I hope that you looked at the registered voters in each district. Because what's happened in San Mateo County is that one half of the registered voter, there's one district that's one-half the size of another district as far as voters. And you can argue the merits or demerits of having that happen, but I, I just think it's going to be very distorted to have, let's say, and I think you're, you're around 6,000 people in population, so in one district, you may have 2,000 or 3,000 voters, and in another district, you'd have 4,000 or 5,000. And I just think that, that lack of diversity of the actual voters is a problem. And I'm not sure that you legally can do it, and I think the lawyer would probably say you probably can't. But I think you can consider it. You may not be able to use it as a final definition, but I think you ought to look at it and understand what you're winding up with as far as actual voters. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. We'll come back to that question afterwards. Betsy? Good evening.
Hi, Betsy Nash. I'm actually in District Four, but I want to make a comment about District Three. And that's, it seems, I'm confused why we would not elect representative for District Three right away, especially given all the issues that Pamela Jones just described that are coming up for District Three, even if it could be made as maybe a two-year appointment. It seems that, so that we, the staggering can still be maintained. It seems that it's unfair for that district that's having so many issues to not be represented. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Betsy. Is there a motion and second to close the public hearing? Just making sure, last call for any cards.
So moved.
Great. Second. All right. I think, Judy, can we go by acclamation on this, closing the public hearing, or do you want us to, to?
Acclamation is mine.
Okay. Great. All right. So now we'll come up here. I did want to relay, you know, the questions made during public comments. So first, first was Mr. Conlin's question about, and I certainly recall in, in the discussions, the, the legal guidance was based on districts, based on population, not by registered voters. So Kara, if you can, if you can address that.
Yes. Thank you. So in terms of the Voting Rights Act, the equal population is based on the population within the districts, not the all people, not just voting age population. And also, it's based on the 2010 census figure. So it, and it will be updated every, every 10 years when the new census is, is released. But we're at the end of the census period, and so it is the case that the data that we are required to use by law is, is a bit outdated. That being said, there, the committee and also the council did look at the voting age population in order to, of each district, in order to determine whether the, whether there was a unrepresented minority population within the district that was either being polarized or, or not. And so it, it was taken into account when, when the, the maps were drawn, and to that extent, it, it was at least examined.
Hey. Yes, go ahead.
So I, I did actually look at this and looked at the numbers, and there are, there's an area where they have almost half as many registered voters as other areas, but legally, that's, that's not how we're allowed, we're not allowed to look at that. Legally, we have to look at population. So it's, that's just the way legally it's structured.
The other question by Betsy Nash was regarding District Three. And I recall when the advisory committee came to us, they did factor, you know, the issues in, they did look at that, but they also wanted to have different sides of town, meaning not only, obviously, District One, but also having a district on the west side of El Camino. Please elaborate. I think that's what I remember, but feel free to.
Yes, that's correct. The, there is some discretion in terms of sequencing, and when the council, that was one of the issues that the council wanted the districting committee to examine. And the districting committee did spend some time on that and thought that it was, in the, in the interest of the city, to have sort of staggered elections so that not all one side of the city would be voting at one time, but that instead, there would be a balance so that the east side of the city and the west side of the city would all be represented at, at the same time. So that was also taken into account.
Vice Mayor Mueller?
I just have a question on the, the last section of the ordinance. And it's just a technicality that I always need clarification on. Until, so if Kat and I are both in District Five, but if one of us were to move in the next two years within Menlo Park, we would still be allowed to do that because we're not yet assigned to a district?
Correct. You're at-large elected council members. As long as you live anyplace in the city, you meet the qualifications to serve as an at-large member of the City Council.
Great. Just wanted that clarification. I doubt it'll come up, but.
Okay. Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to say thanks again to the advisory committee, and we did adopt all of their recommendations unanimously, and they did a great job. So thank you to all of them. And we will be doing this again soon. We have, we get to look forward to doing this. The, the next census will be 2020, and we'll be doing maps once again in probably 2021? Is that right?
Yes, or 2022, depending on when it gets released.
Okay. So we have, we have the opportunity coming up rapidly, I would say. And then the other thing is, I hope that once we do this, I, I hear about, you know, well, one district's not represented. The thing about all of us up here is that we were all represented to represent the entire city, and, and that's what we do. And, you know, I know that people talk about, well, there's this district, and it's like, it's already that kind of balkanization of the community, and I hope that's not what happens. I hope that as this goes forward, that we all, you know, represent everybody, and when people have concerns about issues going on, that they, they feel comfortable coming to us. I really do, because we're a city of only 33,000 people. We're not a huge city, and we'll have that new census data in, coming up soon. But I just wanted to say that. So thanks again to the advisory committee.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton? Oh, did you have your light or what?
No.
Okay. Okay. Got it? You guys okay? All right. Certainly, I would concur with the comments mentioned. Definitely appreciate the advisory committee's work. We appreciate how quickly they put that, put these maps together and how thoroughly, and they debated the issues and, and gave us, I think, a very good, actionable recommendation. So very much appreciate that. And, and I was just impressed looking at that schedule, just how it just worked just right. And we're going to deliver the map to the county in just a few weeks here. So next week will be the second reading, correct? Okay. Great. So with that, is there a, do we have a motion to, I guess, approve the five district map and election sequencing and the first reading of the ordinance as proposed by staff?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Councilmember Klein has made the motion. Is there a second? I'll second it if, for expediency here.
Just a, a technical point. It's really helpful when we have the buttons up.
Yeah, the buttons, the motion and second buttons are not coming up on our screen. So we're, we're verbally having them. So, yeah. Okay. So let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. On item J-2, which is related to an amendment to the city's comprehensive master fee schedule for community development, community services, library, police, and public works, there is no staff presentation tonight, but we will be opening the public hearing simply because communications went out that there would be, that we'd have the public hearing tonight. We will actually continue the public hearing to next week's meeting, but I did want to make sure that we are opening, so we'll now open the public hearing just in case anyone wanted to speak and came here tonight to speak on this item. So we're not going to close. We're going to continue the public hearing to next week, correct? Just checking that that's the right procedure? Okay.
I'll move to continue.
Move to continue? Is there a?
I'll second.
Okay. Great. And I think, by acclamation, do we have a, that we're going to continue to the next? Oh, here, it's up on the screen. Yeah, let's go ahead and vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Great. Making good progress here. Let's now go to the regular agenda. As I mentioned earlier this evening, we're going to move up the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan to the first item under regular agenda. So K-3 will now be moved up. The, this is the biennial review of the, of the. The, this is the biennial review of the DSP. And we have Senior Planner Karina Sandmeyer and our Assistant Community Development Director, Mark Munzer. And we also have Barbara Kouts as our City Attorney. And Bill, you are recused.
Yes, I am. Thank you.
But don't go too far away, because we'll want you back for the other items, so.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Karina Sandmeyer with the Planning Division. And with me are Mark Munzer, Community Development Director, and Barbara Kouts as our outside counsel. And we also have Linda Heineck, Community Development Director, to help answer any questions. So, I'll be going over the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan review. So, the initial review occurred in 2013, and there was a second review in 2015. And then, we have staffs recommending moving forward on the short-term goals from the 2015 review. Some work has been started on those, but they have not been completed due to a high load of development projects. And then, we are seeking City Council direction on long-term goals and further direction on the December 2017 discussion.
Good evening. I'm Mayor, talking members of council, Mark Munzer, Community Development Director. I just wanted to highlight the conversation that we had in December. A requirement of the specific plan is to notify the City Council when, annually, and also when we reach 80% of the potential cap in either the residential or the commercial allowances. So, in December, we had an introduction that Karina, on the next slide, will discuss where we're at in terms of the numbers as of today, as of April. But the reason why we're here in April, after a conversation in December, is the priority session, which was held with the council, and the priority given to the Guild Theater project. So, given the applicant's timeline and the priority given to that development, we prioritize that, and that is why we are now coming back tonight to begin the conversation on the specific plan itself. I would say, for those members of the public interested in the Guild project, its first hearing was at the Housing Commission last week, where the commission recommended approval of their BMR fee. It is now scheduled to go before the Planning Commission on Monday night, and then it is scheduled to come to the City Council on May 22. So, we move forward quickly. That packet, for those interested, for the Planning Commission, will be published, hopefully, tomorrow or Thursday at the latest. So, what we heard in December, to summarize, is that there was an interest in the entertainment uses in the specific plan, specifically related to potentially allowing a portion of the remaining cap to be reserved for an entertainment use, which likely is not possible. And also, if that entertainment use would be something that would be combined with the potential downtown parking structure. There was an initial community meeting for that project, also priority of the council in the specific plan, last evening. The parking structure is also scheduled to come before you next Tuesday night for a study session. So, these two questions are kind of entwined, so to speak, as we sit here tonight. Also raised, secondly, were heights in the specific plan area. So, that related to two potential, or two areas, really. One is the southeast district on El Camino Real, and that is commonly known as the Stanford Project Site, and also where the Big Five property is located. It has higher heights. It has higher floor area ratios and dwelling units per acre than the other districts. So, we're here tonight to maybe get some more direction on that. And also, heights permitted along Santa Cruz Avenue. There was some concern related to not seeing a lot of development directly on Santa Cruz since the plan has been adopted. There was one project that recently went in front of the Planning Commission, 706 Santa Cruz, and that was sent back by the commission to the applicant to make some changes. Regarding parking, the aforementioned parking structure was something that was discussed in December, and also related to housing. So, as Karina will explain in the last slide, there is more room on the residential cap than there is presently on the commercial cap. But what we heard was encouraging housing, particularly related to housing near transit, and then having a conversation about how that would potentially relate to the cap, which is presently at 680 units. So, that briefly summarizes the last conversation. I'll turn it back over to Karina.
Okay, so this slide shows the development summary. So, the specific plan allows a maximum development of 680 residential units and 474,000 net square feet of non-residential. And so, the total entitlements approved so far are 458 residential units and 370,121 net square feet of commercial. So, there was an error in the staff report for the total entitlements proposed. The net new residential is 12 units and not 39 that was listed in the report. The proposed square footage for the commercial is correct, the 67,522. And so, the total entitlements approved and proposed is 497 net new residential units, which is 73% of the maximum, and 437,643 square feet commercial, which is 92% of the maximum. And this map is also in your staff report, and it shows the pending and approved project sites throughout the specific plan area. And the staff report attachment provides a list of the project sites and a summary of the proposal. So, so far, three projects in the specific plan have completed construction. Those are the Marriott Residence in Hotel Lucent and 889 Santa Cruz Avenue, which is a small commercial development. There was a renovation and addition of square footage. Construction is in progress for the following projects: at Station 1300, 612 College Avenue, 1295 El Camino Real, 1020 Alma Street, 1400 El Camino Real, 1149 Chestnut Street, 650 Live Oak Avenue, and 133 Ensonell Avenue. The following projects have obtained discretionary approval, but construction has not started. That's Middle Plaza, 500 El Camino Real, 1275 El Camino Real, and 1540 El Camino Real. And then, these projects are pending discretionary approval. It's 840 Menlo Avenue, 706 Santa Cruz Avenue, 115 El Camino Real, 1704 El Camino Real, and 949 El Camino Real, the Guild Theater renovation and expansion project. And then, three additional projects are moving together as one interconnected project, and those are 1125 Merrill Street, 506 Santa Cruz Avenue, and 556 Santa Cruz Avenue. And so, these are the short-term changes that were proposed in, as part of the 2015 review, and staff is recommending moving forward with these, as they are interconnected, and a lot of them require tax changes that are most efficiently done together. So, these, just quickly, are the rear setbacks, maximum setback, sidewalks, and affordable housing overlay, hotel incentives, electric vehicle charging station, hotel parking rate, personal improvement service, parking rate, station area, parking changes, and maximum sign area for larger parcels. And so, staff is seeking City Council direction on priorities. Some questions we have, should the residential and commercial caps both be increased, or only one, or none? If the Guild Theater project is approved, is another entertainment use a priority? Or is the addition of a parking structure without other uses a priority? And then, if height limits should be modified? And then, we also have the long-term goals from 2015. So, we're seeking a direction on if these are also priorities or just specific ones. Those are hotel incentives in general, infrastructure project list, encouraging housing, especially affordable housing, parking and lieu fees and parking reduction, and preserving small businesses and retail uses. And so, the next steps will be City Council review and direction on changes, so that's tonight. Then, a scope of work would be presented at a future Planning Commission meeting and a future City Council meeting. Staff analysis of proposed changes, including the planned document changes and environmental review. And then, changes would be presented to Planning Commission for review and recommendation, and City Council for review and action. And then, the final revisions would be incorporated into the specific plan document. And then, just to reiterate, these are the points we're seeking direction on. And that concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Karina. Appreciate it. Let's see. If there are no clarifying questions, why don't we go right to public comment? I think we have Jen Woolison, followed by Janelle London. So, I don't know if I see Jen. Okay, how about Janelle London? I don't see her either. I do remember seeing her email, though, earlier today. But I don't see her. What's that? Oh, she had to leave. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry to hear that. Scott Marshall, followed by Adina Levin. Hi, Scott.
Good evening, councilmembers. I actually thought I was just gonna be adding something to Janelle's, Janelle's talk here tonight, but she did write a letter. And I just wanted to reiterate that we would like to see, the EQC, as a member of the EQC, we'd like to see, you guys consider adding green standards?
Hey, Scott, can you move the mic up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we would, wow. We would like to see the consideration of adding M2 green standards to the El Camino and the general, the city general plan, when you're considering this. Also, the development of electrical vehicle charging station infrastructure plan. So, instead of just a few electric charging stations, but maybe consider a citywide area, because they're obviously very popular. Basically, that's it. Like I said, Janelle has written, our chair has written a letter, and you can make reference to that. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Scott. Let's see. Adina Levin?
Good evening, councilmembers. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident, and speaking for myself on this issue, on some of the topics before you with regard to the interest in the update of the downtown plan. You know, one of the topics that you've been hearing from a number of people is an interest in revisiting and increasing the allowable housing in the downtown plan area. I live near downtown. I would be perfectly happy and enthusiastic to have more neighbors in the downtown area. And one of the things that was reported in the staff report, which I recall, you know, having been present for those discussions, was concern, back when that downtown plan was passed, that it was a higher priority to have short buildings than to have more homes. Since then, the housing crisis around the region has really accelerated. And I think that you have been recently hearing a different mix of input on that, and would strongly suggest advancing that concept for what the current mix of concerns and desires are, you know, including wanting to have more housing. On the topic of parking, I'm glad to see the adjusting of what the parking rates are for the area in the sphere of influence of Caltrain. The amount is, what that we have is really pretty large, given the comparable information about the location, and especially as Caltrain is expected to be electrified in just a few years with the potential for even more frequent service. You know, that would be helpful and would also, you know, help to use more of that space for homes, commercial use, entertainment, something of more value than storing cars, especially if that's not gonna be needed. On the subject of parking and parking garages, the Transportation Complete Streets Commission is going to be considering parking and access tomorrow, so I'll share thoughts in that venue for recommendation to council. And, but in conclusion, you may have seen the news that the Senate Bill 827, the one that proposed to have a statewide upzoning of locations near a major train station to allow housing, and that did fail to pass committee today. And this council wanted local control. So, now, here's the opportunity to take advantage of that local control and allow that housing under local control. Thank you.
Well said, Adina. Thank you. I just wanted to see if there are any more public speakers for, oh, yes, Katie. Okay.
This is weird. I've never known this before. Maybe this is an orthodox, but I'm responsible for Jen not being here, because her husband texted me to ask about the agenda, and I didn't get it. And I think she was meaning to be here to make her comment. And I'm looking at the slides that she had for you. Would it be acceptable for me to share them?
Absolutely.
Okay. She actually sent them to City Council email. Can you guys bring them up? These are not my slides. They're Jen Woolison's slides. They represent the opinion of Jen Woolison.
That's okay.
Okay. Sorry, Jen. She was at something Holocaust event at the JCC earlier tonight.
Oh, cool. Okay. So, Jen wanted to make sure that, as you guys are talking about the downtown specific plan, you're remembering about the public benefit part of the plan. So, we've talked a lot about the development aspects, but she was recollecting that the overall intent was also about improving the life of the community, and just making the downtown a fun place for people to live, work, and play, and improving connectivity to downtown. So, when she was looking through some of the things that had happened since the downtown specific plan had happened, she noted that there's been a lot of improvement of development, but not necessarily a lot of public space improvements or improved connectivity to the downtown. So, specifically, she was thinking about things like the improved walking and biking infrastructure for downtown access, and some of the communal space that we had talked about. And so, I'm gonna keep flipping through here. Sidewalks on Santa Cruz Avenue within the downtown, the Paseo thing happened, but maybe not the way we had thought it would happen, and it didn't end up being a great experiment. This is just a list of things that she was ticking off here. I'll just let you guys read it. Sorry, this is super awkward. We're just gonna keep going. Here, for example, is the vision that she had seen for the Paseo, and the reality really didn't match it. Some more aspects that she thought were important to note. Are you guys looking at this?
You're doing great.
Okay, great. All right. And then, El Camino, which I revisit every day. It's still not great, crossing El Camino, trying to get around that section of town, which makes it harder for people. It really does divide our community. And we talked about, I think, things like making the crosswalks better, having like a countdown, for example, and extended time for pedestrians, high visibility. a countdown, for example, and extended time for pedestrians, high visibility, et cetera. That hasn't really happened yet. And we know that, you know, transportation folks have been busy, so it's not like this all should have happened by now. It's just that if 90% of the development has happened and none of the public stuff has happened, maybe we need to start thinking about how to shift that balance. So, that was Jen's major point. Like, we've done a lot of development. When's the community benefit part going to start kicking in? And she would have said this better, but that's what I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. And please, thank Jen for us. And I did want to, again, reiterate and thank Scott and ask Scott to thank Janelle for, because I did read Janelle's letter, and I think we all did. So, we definitely appreciate that. And their message came across to us. So, I don't think there are any more cards. We'll come back up here. Actually, let's just go, Vice Mayor Mueller.
Okay. So, I'm going to try to go through this quick for interest of brevity. So, Guild Theater, obviously, still a priority. For me, another entertainment use in the parking structure is still a priority to me and many of the residents who I speak to. So, I still, but I don't want to, out of deference to my colleagues, I don't want to say, I think it's proper to phrase that as for consideration to come back to us, but I still want that to come back to us for consideration. I want to make sure that this goes to the planning. So, it's interesting tonight because I want to provide you direction, but I also feel like I need the feedback from the commissions for consideration in order to provide you with the breadth of direction. And I also, in the process, I'm kind of used to getting that first. So, I want the Planning Commission to look at community benefits and the plan generally. I want the Environmental Quality Commission to make their recommendations for green standards through their process. The Transportation Commission or the Complete Streets Commission, whatever it will be after tonight, to look at connectivity in El Camino Real. If there's a bike commission after tonight, then the bike commission will look at that as well. There are a couple folks who are left out, who we need to make sure see this, considering everything we're talking about. And I know we're adding to the work, but I think the school districts, both the Menlo Park City School District and the Sequoia High School District, are going to have feedback for us based on our recent interactions with them. So, really needs to go to them for what their comments are, specifically with respect to the caps. Also, the fire district needs to look at it, needs to look at it, and feedback specifically with respect to the caps, and then also how the, how the plan has been, how they've seen it implemented and what issues they have found. And for me personally, so I'm not really to talk about the caps tonight, but I will say that my, where I am on it really hinges on the transportation master plan and my confidence in that transportation master plan. So, a lot of the approvals that we have done of recent note always said, always referenced the transportation master plan like it was going to come through and be a cure-all for what would come with these developments. And unfortunately, at this moment, I'm not sure I have 100% in that confidence in that process. I'm sure that can change in the future, but I really going to need to see that first and what's coming out of that. So, that, I think, is all my comments tonight. I hope that's, I'm not sure how helpful it is.
It's helpful. Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Just for clarification, I apologize at the beginning when you were speaking, trying to figure out some technical difficulties. So, you said you were supportive of an additional entertainment use?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
In addition to the Guild?
Absolutely.
And a parking structure?
So far, the way I see it is that, so just very frankly, the reason why that I look at the parking structure is the potential to house some, a small movie theater or two, or a potential two, three, two-screen or three-screen akin to what you see in like a ski resort. Like North Star, for instance, has movie theaters that size is because in the parking structure, we'll be able, as the landlord potentially, to control the rent for that venue. That making, that might, that would make it economically feasible, actually potentially, to have first-run movies in our downtown, which I think would be an incredible benefit to the community.
Thank you. And then, in reference to your comments about the, this being reviewed by the various commissions and the school districts and the fire districts, you're proposing that that would happen, and then we would return with a work plan and a timeline and a budget after those conversations?
I think we're going to want to look at what their input is on the caps, because it's going to, what I would hate to do is for us to have that discussion and then go to them after the fact. We really are going to need to know whether or not they believe that, what capacity they have, and then look at if we add a certain amount of either both commercial or housing, how that affects and what they, what their input is on that. Typically, what's happened in the past is they, is they show up, we give them notice, and then afterwards engage in a conversation with them. And I think it'd be better to go ahead and iron all of that out through the process.
In fact, when I make some comments, I'm going to elaborate further on that education nexus linkage, which is turning out to be an issue. Councilmember Carlton.
First of all, I want to, I was going to say the same thing, and I totally want to back up Vice Mayor Mueller when I agree that we need to let sure, we need to, is this on? Sorry, did you hear any of that? I apologize. Now, I'm pushing buttons over here. I forget to push these. I want to support Vice Mayor Mueller in his assertion that we need to make sure that the right people are looking at this. You know, we put people on commissions because we want them to do research for us and advise us on the different things. And this obviously has to do with education, with fire, with transportation, with the planning. With the EQC, I mean, I personally, my kind of crusade, it seems this year, is EV chargers, because I want to make it as easy a solution as possible as the technology gets there for people to make that decision and have those available if they live in apartments or, you know, if they're driving distances to get to work. Because not only is that going to help us with our greenhouse gas targets that were mentioned earlier, it helps us have cleaner air, you know, all the way down the line, obviously. So, anyway, I support making sure that the commissioners have a chance to look at this and provide feedback. Saying that, the only kind of guidance I would say is, first of all, shout out to anyone listening, we have almost 200 housing units that can still be bought, built in the area. So, if anybody has older apartment buildings that they'd like to renew and put at higher density, especially near where we have transit or downtown, we do have almost 200 more units that can still be done. And I want to make sure that people don't confuse the 92% full with that, that those are still available for people who are interested in going there. The hotels, we have 246 new hotel rooms out of the 380. We've also had a lot of hotel rooms that were renovated, and that's great for the city because that brings in more TOT that supports our schools, our programs. Do we know, how many units, how many rooms were renovated? I know I've got how many are new, but do we know how many were? And I know that we have a second hotel that's talking about going there as well on El Camino. If not, we can find out later. I was just wondering if you had that information on hand.
That's a great question. We'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay, no problem. I was also wondering, do we know how many BMR houses have been approved at this point?
We don't know the total, Councilmember. The two largest projects, the Stanford project had between eight and 10 units. That's still to be determined based on their other development. And then, the Station 1300 project had 20 BMR units, split between low and moderate income. There are some other smaller developments that have units here and there, but that's, those are the largest two.
So, I'm happy that we have the new state law that allows us to bring in BMR for apartment units that go forward. So, that's going to help a lot. I wish we'd had that before everything went forward with Sharon Green and some of the other large apartment groups that we have. I'm happy with 92% commercial. I have an idea to float with staff and with the commissioners that also supports what was just said. I've also spoken to a lot of people, and I think the people I've spoken to are excited about entertainment downtown, not only movie theaters, but as the Guild gets renovated, they can have plays, they can have speakers from Kepler's. You know, you've got that level of entertainment. You also have the entertainment of the cinema in the parking structure, which I think we've all agreed is a great idea. And what I'm also hearing from residents is people like that. So, my suggestion is that we create a new category for entertainment FAR. That's a separate way of looking, because that's not just a commercial office building. That's a kind of FAR that's going to help enliven downtown and provide a service that I think people have communicated that they'd really like to see in our downtown area. So, I'll let, I know the devil's always in the details in these things, but that's kind of the umbrella suggestion on that.
Thank you. I did find the hotel room information real quickly. The 555 Glenwood, which was renovated into the Marriott Residence Inn, was 138 rooms. And 727 El Camino, the now Hotel Lucent, was 47 rooms. So, 185, if I'm doing my math right?
Okay, that's great. And we expect the third hotel to come forward? Or is that?
The third hotel, which is at 1400 El Camino, under construction right now, to be known as, I think this is known, as the Park James Hotel, is 61 rooms, and we expect it to come online soon.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein.
Thank you. I'll start by just making sure I don't repeat. I do, I'll support Mr. Mueller's, you know, considering, you know, the consideration of entertainment use with the parking structure and the details that he put forth there. Commissioner input, I think, is the right idea as well. The, you know, in our, you know, specific plan, we had the transportation demand management programs, and the TMP comes up clearly, right, as something, you know, the Transportation Master Plan. And how these things all dovetail together to help us make better decisions about what we should do in the specific plan. I think that, you know, there may be a, I don't recall ad hoc, but when these, you know, these data points are able to be integrated, maybe we have a meeting where we could start, where we plan for a meeting to say, okay, the transportation plan is done, now let's have a discussion about how we implement that. Or staff just comes back and says, we have them, here's what we recommend based on what we have. Something that allows us not to have to feel like we're missing the opportunity now or pushing it back till we get it. But I, again, I can leave it up to your discretion just to highlight it as an important point. I do think there's a, I'm not sure how much of an opportunity, but Caltrain, they're now, I think they feel like they're kind of on the hook now for looking at how they start expanding affordable housing around the property they own, about 30 acres they've allocated to be targeted for that. They don't have a lot of acreage in our town, clearly, but I'm not sure if we've had conversations about what they could do with affordable housing in their footprint, that we'd have to redesign some of the area, the station, and probably coordinate with what we're doing with rail. But I think having them involved, just given they're such a big landowner, because I think they're going to have to do something. It's in the news now every day that they keep talking about their strategy for affordable housing, and we know Caltrain, they'll do that for a long time. So, maybe we can jump in there and try to take advantage of it, because I think affordable housing is probably where we're, probably where we're having the biggest challenge in the downtown area, and I think anywhere in the city because of the cost. And so, how do we incentivize it? You know, the housing element, you know, zoned up, that, you know, all the apartment areas, like on Robles, you know, and some of these adjacent streets are, you know, that came into El Camino Real, and there hasn't been a lot of activity in those at all, right, to take them and turn them into bigger units. I'm not sure why that is, but I'd love to start figuring out who owns all those properties and what it takes to accelerate potentially them taking advantage of the specific plan or the housing element and building up more affordable housing with the school district involved. And I know, Peter, you're going to bring that up and get more detail on that as well, because it's definitely a third rail right now. Some of the feedback, I think, it's hard to explain, but when it says public benefit, none of the public benefits come, but all the development has, there's been really no development. There's been approval of entitlements, right, but there's development happening. Those big projects, the two of them, they're not out, but they swallow up most of the percentage, right, because they've been approved. And so, some of what we're trying to do is, you know, the fees and what we kind of recoup from these development projects help, you know, pay for a lot of the amenities. And so, some, it's going to lag necessarily sometimes behind it unless we create our own amenity funds, which we did approve. And so, I think there's some clarification on that, that there is ample public benefit exploration that we should do, but we also have some in place that just haven't activated yet because it just hasn't been fully developed. We haven't reached the potential. It takes a long time to build, and Stanford isn't building. And so, I'll make that in a public meeting clear, Stanford isn't building, and they have, do have a DA in hand.
We did get a notice today that they were going to notify residents in the near future of construction beginning
Okay.
imminently.
Nice. There you go. Great meeting.
Wow.
Great meeting.
That's huge.
That'll be helpful.
That would just be the beginning of the demolition.
Yeah, the process. And then, it's, I do think there was some articulate input on, when I was doing just a little bit of, just trying to figure out if there's any programs to emulate on, you know, let's just call it downtown merchant preservation, right? Are there ways, are there concepts we haven't approached? Are there ways that we can look at to help stimulate more retail, right, in the downtown, specifically Santa Cruz, the downtown area? And I know El Camino Real comes up, but we discussed this for years, and every single one of our reports, consultant feedback was, you know, the survival rate on El Camino Real for retail storefront is very low. I don't know how you change that. I don't think we really should make that more important than downtown and looking at, how do, are there things we're missing in terms of stimulating that? We get some really good, I think, new, and I'll say, we have some really new, exciting projects, like Coffee Bar's great. The Guild is great, but these are also people who are financing it, right? And I think part of it is because they see a plan where potentially this could be more active, activated with these, the housing coming in. That's great, but what about the areas where they don't have that kind of financing? How do we help them? And you may have some ideas in your experience, but I don't have any on my, you know, tip of my fingers. But I would like us to explore that, because I think we're going to have a lot of turnover as we go along, just because we're going to be working out who's here, who's not. I'd rather not have just a bunch of coffee places. And we used to have a lot of rug places. Then, we switched it out, and now it's coffee. Toy store, I just talked to Dexter, I mean, it's very hard to run a toy store in town. It's hard without subsidy help or things. It's just, business is very difficult. I don't want to lose these businesses. I think it's, so I want to emphasize it and acknowledge ignorance on what actually works, instead of throwing things at you because I saw on a website. But I think we need to start thinking about some of that in El Camino Real, the downtown area. And as far as parking goes, again, if we can establish a way to take advantage of property by looking at it from a BICs use plan, and then have affordable housing as a big component of that to try to solve multiple problems with whatever, like a parking space or the Caltrain property, just trying to find these locations where we can put in a lot of different, you know, solutions. And I think affordable housing has to be one of the priorities because we lack it so heavily on this side, and it's probably one of our only opportunities. I think that's a lot of what I wanted to get off my chest. Sure, I forget something else, but.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein, just for clarification. When you're speaking of downtown, just for the record, Santa Cruz and adjacent streets, differentiating between?
Yes. That's right. I call it El Camino Real, yeah, I just call it ECR if we're going to refer to that.
And regarding parking requirements and affordable housing, something that came up last night, we don't have to, certainly have a lengthy we don't have to certainly have a lengthy conversation about it, but some of the things that I've seen in other places is to stimulate affordable housing, to have different parking requirements than you do for other market rate housing, particularly when it's adjacent to transit, is something we're going to be exploring. It could be for both market rate and affordable, but I've seen it more discounted for affordable development. That's great.
Also, sorry, the last thing was the EQC recommendations, some of those. I think those can apply very, pretty easily because we've thought it, researched it, and brought it into other parts of town. So I'm going to echo that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Keith.
Thank you. Mark, thanks for the report. It's always good to have our reviews of the specific plan. And I'm going to go over your priorities, and then I've got some other comments I'll make and kind of weave them in here. But as the screen appear, increased residential or commercial caps. I'm interested in trying to promote more housing downtown. I think, as we've seen from the chart you provided, the commercial space is just fine. But it's the housing that, and we keep hearing from our community as we have this jobs housing imbalance, to try to create more housing. So, and one thought, I know, reading Patty Frye's email, was, you know, we understand about the impacts on the school districts, and we're worried about that. I think that's across the board up here. And maybe focusing on trying to get some senior housing, which, you know, we don't have a lot of, would be really, really helpful. So, again, with senior housing, of course, you're not affecting the school district, but it's, we have that, what you call the Silver Tsunami happening, and an aging population. I love that name, the Silver Tsunami. And we need to figure out how to house those people. And our aging population is great. We want to make sure they can stay here. And as they can move out of their homes, then families can move into the homes and people can stay in our community. So I would really like to try and encourage that. And I thank Patty for writing in about, one of her ideas there about promoting affordable housing. And I also want to thank the housing commissioners for all their work on helping us promote affordable housing. I spoke with a couple of commissioners today who really wanted to, and did express in some emails to us as well, to look at the land that the city owns as ways to create more housing. Because we just, the city doesn't own a lot of land, but we do own some. And we know, now we have a advice from Mr. McClure that we do own the parking lots so we can move forward with, you know, different options on those parking lots. And we have several parking lots downtown. And maybe working with some other community members downtown who are interested in helping create more parking and housing. So I want to keep, keep working on that. When we talk about, I want to, I'll get down, well, if I'm looking at priorities, and one of them also is this parking garage, and we had a meeting in here last night. Some people were here for that meeting. With the parking garage, I think it is important to make sure that, when we look at that, that we're looking at one that can be converted. And I've talked to Mr. McIntyre about this. He was telling me about a building he lived in in San Francisco that had some conversions to housing. And so, just being really mindful when we move forward with this to create a parking garage that's flat and not ramped on the inside so that it can be repurposed, should we need to do that, as we see more of self-driving cars and ride-sharing programs being more and more popular. And as far as the parking garage goes, as we have conversations on this, we all know it's going to take a while. We don't have the money for it right now. We don't know exactly what our plan is. We don't know if it has entertainment, if it has housing, what it has, if it's just parking. And the downtown specific plan currently only allows for just parking. So I do want to see a modification on that so that we can add for an entertainment or housing. I mean, I'd love to see both. I think that would be great. And when I think of entertainment venues and theaters, you know, perhaps theater could go underground since you don't need windows for theater. And people don't necessarily like parking underground, and it's very expensive to build. So just thinking about different ideas and different options. I also want to, I think we should look at different ideas, and I brought this up a while ago on council about subsidizing ride-sharing for our residents. And I Googled it a little bit, you know, there's a program in Summit, New Jersey that is subsidizing ride-sharing programs for residents for carpooling to the train stations. But Mountain View is also looking at this, and they have been since probably last year, on using ride-sharing programs to help their own residents come downtown during lunchtime, during dinnertime, or whenever, but residents to come downtown so they don't have to drive a car. Because we keep hearing there's a lack of parking, so let's, if we incorporated something like this, it wouldn't take long to do. I talked to Mayor Siegel about this and asked him where they are in Mountain View on it. And he said that they, they're looking at privacy issues because if the data is collected, do they have to, you know, what happens on privacy issues? So they're still trying to work that out with the ride-sharing companies. But I think that would be something to look at. And then also, San Carlos and Los Angeles use parking sensors. And they have, there's a great app called Parker App, P-A-R-K-E-R. And San Carlos did a pilot with them in 2013, I believe. And it's just another way to help people find their parking spaces. Because I just keep hearing this, and I know it's going to take us, we've been talking about a parking garage for a long time. So maybe we need to look at a couple of different ideas, too. Okay, going back to your list, I added my own, you know, after residential, I added my own parking. So if the Guild Theater project is approved, I definitely want to keep moving forward on the Guild Theater. I think that's really important for the community. It's one of those things where, when Jen Wollison says, where's the public benefit? This is a great benefit, and people are really excited about this venue. So I'm excited that this is coming before the planning commission, you said, on Monday?
Monday, the 23rd.
Monday, the 23rd. And then it comes back to us?
May 22nd.
Okay, good. So that's moving along rapidly.
Indeed.
Yes. So that's good. And I talked about the other parking issues. So modifying height limits, I think we do need to look at that. And I would be interested in looking at modifying height limits for housing. And when I look at the specific plan, and I see where we have our aging apartment buildings, and a lot of them are two stories, I think it's okay to have a conversation about modifying the height limits to have these rebuilt as higher. And I don't know what that is yet. I know Adina mentioned this Weiner bill, and that had gone down from, I think, 85 feet to 55 feet. But of course, we heard, you know, we know the latest now. But I think it's important to look at the height. And maybe we have to have a conversation about going a little higher for the housing since we all know we're in this housing crisis. Long-term goals, I mean, some of these I've already addressed, but I want to, the preserve small businesses and retail uses. I see we have our Chamber of Commerce Executive Director Fran Dean in here. Thanks, Fran, for always coming to our meetings and usually speaking, and representing our small businesses. And I think it's vitally important that we keep our small businesses. And in looking at the emails that came in, again, I think Patty Frye had a recommendation on prioritizing. One of the things she was saying is maybe having an overlay on El Camino for the first floor for businesses. And as I think Councilmember Klein just talked about, we haven't seen that a lot of commercial property uses are successful in El Camino. It doesn't mean they can't be, and we do have some that are. And, you know, hopefully, we all frequent them and use them. But I would like to have more of a discussion about that. How do we dive, take a deeper dive and talk about keeping our existing local retailers? And making sure that they can stay here. EQC, the Environmental Quality Commission, thank you, Janelle, for sending in the letter, and to Scott for speaking tonight, and Diane Bailey also wrote in, and Tom Cabot wrote in. Everybody wrote in saying, please make the priorities that you did in the M2 city, for the downtown specific plan. I totally support that. We brought this up last year as well, and we said, well, we'll hold off on doing this until we look at this review. And I'm very supportive of doing that, so I would like to see that. Let me just look at my notes. Yeah, and I think people, you know, when you look at the build-out for the commercial, the non-residential at 92%, I just want to highlight that we knew that we were going to see two projects come forward as soon as we did the specific plan, and we hoped that they would in 2012 when we passed it. And those two projects were the largest land-owning projects, and that's Greenheart and Stanford. So it was no surprise that they came forward. They were waiting for us to finish the specific plan so that they could come forward. Those are big projects. And the rest of the projects that we have, unless people, you know, sort of parcel together different pieces of land, we're not going to see that kind of, that's just not going to happen. I do question on Santa Cruz Avenue about the height limit as well, because it seems that, I know we've got a couple of projects coming forward, but I heard from many people after we passed this that perhaps we went too low on Santa Cruz, and that's why you're not seeing any, you know, development come forward because it also has to be parked. And then, of course, that circles back to the conversation about the parking garage. And if we have a parking garage, then maybe these property developers can purchase spots in the parking garage and be able to do something. But on Santa Cruz Avenue, it's two stories now. We allowed a third, but it had to be set back. So you weren't really getting that much more square footage for the cost of doing any development, which is why we just didn't see a lot. So that could be something we need to look at as well. Do you have any clarifying questions for me?
I do have a couple. Thank you, Councilmember Keith, for your comments. Related to the increase in housing, potentially focused around transit. So are your thoughts that that would be encouraged within the current cap? Or that that may lead to an increase in that unit number?
Say that again?
So you had said that you're interested in encouraging housing where possible, potentially an increase in height limits. That could get us to a point where it's over that 680-unit maximum? So is the direction just to generally investigate what that would involve? And that if it required an increase in the cap, then that should be investigated, or is it?
Well, I think it's a bigger conversation, too, because I think we have to look at the apartments that are currently there that are two-story. And I don't know what the numbers are. I mean, gosh, if we got from 485 to 680, that would be fantastic, especially if it was senior housing. So that wasn't a big, you know, issue with our school district, which I totally agree that we need to have conversations with them as well. But I would, I think I would probably need a little bit of analysis to figure out how many apartment units are there now, and what, you know, and probably, you know, discussion with the Housing Commission about what it would look, how many units, how many stories we should go at. And I also think a lot of times with landscaping, you can beautifully sort of mask density and height. And I look at the building that we have on Valparaiso that's very, very tall, and a lot of people don't even know it exists. And it's got, you know, lots of trees, and when you're walking on the ground level, you don't notice it. So I would keep that in mind as something, I'm not saying go that high everywhere. I'm just saying that's something to keep in mind when we're looking downtown for opportunities for new, for infill in the apartments that are there. So I think it would take a conversation with our apartment owners, our Housing Commission. You know, it's not just some quick answer that I have for you on that.
Understood. And then, this isn't more a clarifying question, it's more of a plug from our economic development staff. So there is a survey that was mentioned last night related to the parking structure that initially meant to mention.
1,300 people had filled it out.
Yeah, it's a very large number that have already provided input. So I would encourage folks to look on the city website for that. And then also, just for clarity, if we were not clear enough. So as I mentioned, the Guild Theater is a separate specific plan amendment. It's envisioned that the parking structure, however that conversation may go, would likely be its own amendment to the specific plan. And then the balance of the plan, whatever those issues may be, after we have these recommended conversations with the commissions and the school districts, would likely be its own process. So I just wanted to be clear about that.
Thank you. That's helpful. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, some great comments. I'll probably chime in with a couple of reinforcements. First of all, I agree about wanting to encourage retail. I think you heard that from Councilmember Klein, Councilmember Keith. This is also something from Patty Frye's email about wanting to make sure we can preserve and encourage retail. We currently have the one, the first-story requirement for retail on Santa Cruz Avenue, but not necessarily in El Camino. So I would, and I've certainly read that Palo Alto has implemented a first-story retail in the, you know, university downtown. So I think we ought to consider maybe broadening that first-floor retail. But I'm not even sure that's going to be enough, right? We may need some additional incentive to make sure we're not losing retail, whether it's, you know, restaurants or small businesses. It's something that I certainly am concerned about. Now, I'm assuming retail is part of that non-residential cap, right? And I'm not particularly interested at this point about increasing the non-residential cap, but rather using the remaining space as possible around a couple of things. One is retail, another, again, this, you know, sort of encouraging retail, entertainment. And the other area, which hasn't been mentioned, is small office space, which is for startups or even incubator space, rather than, you know, the Class A office space that's, you know, for a larger company. I do think we have the opportunity to encourage more startup businesses, smaller businesses. And so, I'd like to figure out a way we can preserve what's left in that non-residential space cap somehow. And I don't know, and this also, when we were going through our first biennial review, there was a comment by, I think it was Mark Bryman, who was saying, you know, the issue with the Stanford and Greenheart projects are great, but what's left in the office space for the small parcels, right? That might be able to be good places for startups to, you know, to inhabit. And so, if there's a way that we can somehow allocate or incentivize or encourage that remaining office, or remaining non-residential space for those uses, I think I really appreciate your suggestions and thoughts. The area with, so housing, I would also echo that I'm also interested in seeing an increase. And that may potentially include the increase in the residential cap of 680. I think I'm interested. I'd also look, would like to look at that in the context of, in the housing element, we looked at the infill areas. I'm looking at Justin in the back because I know we worked on that, you know, for some time. I think he went block by block to look at all the, you know, on Livo, Grovel, you know. But the key point is when you have, you know, certainly increasing the residential density in a half-mile radius of the station, you get at least somewhere between 30 to 50%. Will use the train to commute. And so, you know, whether that's incentivizing that through lower parking, you know, requirements. But I don't think we can just look at the 680. I think we also have to look at what's in that surrounding area to get the picture of what the residential possibility is. But now, the other thorny issue with residential is now, I think, as Vice Mayor Mueller said, the impact on the school district. So what we're learning is that, you know, the school districts are looking at some percentage of those units generating additional students. Well, each of those students cost 13,000 per student per year to educate. And the property taxes that are generated aren't meeting up at that level. And then the secondary consideration is now, both whether it's the Menlo Park City School District or the Sequoia Union High School District, they are, they've maxed out their facilities. So now, we're talking about any additional students are going to require additional space for them. And the state imposes these, a maximum on the impact fees that is nowhere near the cost of construction for them. So that's unfortunately what we just learned with, on Connect Menlo. But. So that's unfortunately what we just learned with, on Connect Menlo. But I think if we have a chance to now sort of think through that, is there, is there a way we can? I mean, I, I know we have typically looked at, well, let's keep it at studios and one-bedrooms and, you know, reduce the impact. We, as Councilmember Keith talked about, the senior tsunami and the, you know, senior housing, I think that's another good alternative. But I think we have to look at different ways that we can incentivize that residential to, to minimize its impact on the school districts. And if it does have an impact, how are we going to help to, to address that while we're including them in this, in this process? The, bear with me. I also concur about the Santa Cruz, Santa Cruz Avenue height limits and sort of revisiting that. I think as Councilmember Keith said, I've heard the same complaints that it doesn't pencil out. And I think, and I don't know whether, I know we talked about three stories, but then the, it's in the, it's in the plan as 48 feet and 48, or 38 feet and 38 feet doesn't, if you have retail on the first floor, it doesn't quite, you know, I know that's part of it. I think as you were mentioning, Councilmember Keith, the, the issue of the parking. I mean, all of these things, we, we may be able to unlock that Santa Cruz Avenue potential. I think we'd like to be able to do that. The, a new topic which I wanted to ask about is about floor area ratio clarification of some rules. This is something that has come up where we had, for example, a restaurateur had to fill in some basement storage room with sand in order to build a deck up on the top floor because the storage room in the basement counted toward their FAR. I've also heard stories about that we count on every floor, the elevator space on every floor. So what I want to make sure is that we're not, you know, we're, we're not out of step with our surrounding communities and how they interpret it, because you have architects who work in multiple communities, and they have an expectation of what, how they, how they count the FAR. And if we're, if we're creating problems like that, I think that's something that would be worth cleaning up while we can. We talked about reduced parking near the train station. I think Adina Levin talked about that, certainly want to encourage that. The base FAR in the southeast zone, I am not, I, I'm, I'm fine with leaving the bonus FAR where it is in that southeast zone. I think there were reasons that we talked about it. But I am concerned that the base FAR may have been set, we, we might have had it too high. And I think most of the other zones were set at, I think, 1.1. And I'd like to revisit that to make sure that we're getting the public benefit discussions that, that need to be had on that remaining area left on the southeast zone. I did see in the staff report that an amenity fund has been created. I think that's great. I think unfortunately, probably one of the key amenities will be the garage, which isn't a sexy amenity, but it's probably pretty necessary, and it's going to be expensive. So, but, by the way, I think I do agree with, with what several council members have said about looking at entertainment with the garage, particularly when it's, when it can share that, that parking and use different times. Certainly, I'm hopeful that once the Stanford project gets going, we can get, I, I'm hoping that we will have that study session soon on the underpass or overpass in terms of at Middle to Burgess, and what the potential funding sources, other grant sources would be for that, aside from the Stanford contribution. I'm hoping that we, we had talked about having a study session. That is a key public benefit that we have, we have talked about as part of the downtown specific plan, and I'd like to realize that in my lifetime. And finally, sorry-
That's a ticking clock, too.
I, right, I'm sorry, I'm getting punchy here. The green design standards, EQC recommendations, I certainly concur, but I also know it's not a perfect mapping to the downtown, because there are different types of projects. So recognize that you're going to have to tweak it and modify it, but I, but the spirit of that transfer is something, I certainly agree with that. I think that's-
Can I have a plug, Mike Collins? Yes, Councilmember Klein.
And you mentioned the, the budget and the cost of updating the plan that was also in here. There's, it's not as if you can just do it with everything you have, right? So acknowledging that, that there is an investment. And I know if you wanted us to acknowledge that, and say, we see that as a need.
Yes, so-
I missed what you said, actually. What'd you say, Rich?
There's a, you know, to redo the plan, right? And to update areas, if there's caps increases, then to do those things, there's, it's an investment of staff resource and time and cost.
Right, so in, in the staff report towards the end, Table 4, there's a project cost that for the plan in $2012 was about $1.7 million. Staff notes that the, the changes, at least that we're initially talking about, would, would not be as all-encompassing. We gave a rough estimate, about $425,000, but obviously, that's very contingent on what exactly the scope is, what, how involved the consultant is, because the, the lion's share of those costs resides with the private consultant that assists staff. So that's all something, is as we get input and we understand exactly what this amendment and potentially another amendment with the parking garage structure and other uses, we'll have to figure out what that number is.
Okay. Okay, I think you've got a lot of, do, do you have any reactions, follow-up questions, Mark and Kri?
The one thing, could you pull up the short term? I just wanted to make sure, one thing we haven't talked about is the, the short-term changes. So many of these, some of these are actually being addressed separately, so Councilmember Carlton and others represented the EV charter requirements, which is on a separate track, which will, is being revised based on planning commission input. But some of these other ones are minor, fairly minor text changes. So without hearing anything else, we will attempt to proceed with, with those, as we have since 2015. We are hoping to improve our, our staffing, and that a lot of what the new folks will do, or promoted folks will do, will address some of these changes. So without hearing that, we will proceed with some of these short-term ideas. With that, we're good?
Great. And then, so the, in terms of next steps on the specific plan, so this will also go to the Planning Commission at some point, and then, and then, I'm not sure I know what, what you've got in mind in terms of, you know?
Yes, so, well, thank you for your input, first of all. What we need to do is summarize what we heard this evening. I am guessing the next step will be to go to the Planning Commission with the summary of these conversa, of this conversation, and get their thoughts on how to proceed, asking them these same questions and providing them with your input. And then we will figure out how we incorporate the other commissions and get input in their particular areas, and likely return to you with a tentative work plan. Per your council work plan, that's scheduled by the end of the year. Certainly do our best to return before that.
Great. Councilmember Keith, did you have just a quick-
Well, I do. I just, Barbara, I see you here. It is 9:48. Is, is there anything you want to say, since you have been here? We haven't asked you any questions, but you're, any legal advice?
Don't mess it up.
Not really. I think with the parking structures, I think, as you all know, that would take a change in the specific plan to permit non-public uses in those structures. And some of you who are on the council before, there was this whole issue about them being financed by assessment districts. And there's a rather odd government code provision about leasing, leasing spaces, not selling. Anyway, we're taking a look at that and just-
What do you mean by that?
What the government code says is that you need the permission of 51% of the people who paid the original assessments to lease space in a parking, to lease basically a facility that was supported by these assessments. And the assessments were imposed between, let's see, 1945 and I think 1950-something, and they were completely paid off by the 80s. I mean, whether these people are, you know, exist anymore, anyway, we need-
They do.
I mean, it was a long time ago. But, let's see, the earliest were about the time I was born. But, but we're just looking at, you know, what limitations that might be for use, and what it means, and whether those, you know, and ways, kind of, anyway.
So I have, that, I have to ask you then, has there been a determination that the city owns the lots now?
Actually, we've asked for preliminary title reports, because we wanted to say it, but yes. I mean, state law is that, yes, these are public facilities-
Okay.
-that happen to be supported by assessment districts, just as though people had got together and bought a sewer line.
But you're asking for the-
But the issue is that if you lease them, say, you lease a portion of the parking garage for an entertainment structure or for housing, that's when this government code provision might kick in, that would say you need the permission of 51% of the people who paid the original assessments, which seems, you know, and another, another possibility, seriously, might be a change in the state law.
You're kidding, really? That we would be-
Well, I mean, I'm just, you know, that, it, it seems for assessments that were last paid in the 80s, over 30 years ago, that's, that's not a reasonable requirement.
So what would you title that?
What would I title my new law? We haven't, just, just to back up a little bit on this, we haven't looked at, we haven't really looked, you know, we haven't looked at the legislative history, what this statute was intended to accomplish. It's one of those statutes, it sounds like it was adopted for some specific situation in some specific community some time ago, but we don't, we don't know that. There isn't, the case law generally says that once they're paid for, they're public facilities, and you can choose to use them however you want. But we do want to kind of look at this rather odd provision about leasing them.
Well, we'll stay tuned and look forward to your determinations there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, I think I'm actually going to go to K1, which is the Complete Streets Commission. In light, since I see several commissioners patiently here this evening, why don't we take this issue up next, which is K1, Adopt a Resolution: Extending the Bicycle Commission and Transportation Commission Pilot Merger to Form a Complete Streets Commission. And, let's see, okay, so I see Nikki is here. I don't know if Kevin is here.
Nikki Nagaya, Assistant Public Works Director. So care with me while I regroup a little bit, because I was ready to do the other item first, so I just need to shuffle some, some papers around, make sure everything is ready to go. But in essence, we are before you tonight because the commissions are getting ready to appoint new members, so the advertisements have been out for the last few weeks, and the one-year pilot that you had approved last year is due to be evaluated for the May meeting. So we will walk you through some background and the staff recommendations. So the charge of the Complete Streets Commission, given the hour, I, I won't read these all to you tonight, this was also in the staff report, the mission and charge of the commission that the council had adopted last year. In February of 2017 is when the, the resolution was adopted by the council to establish the one-year pilot of the commission. The first meeting, as I mentioned, was held in May of 2017. And then twice in the last year, we solicited feedback from the commissioners, first in October, and then in March, requesting, again, just feedback on how the pilot was going. And then at the last council meeting on March 27th, you heard the, the commission quarterly report as a spoiler for the staff presentation tonight. So as a reminder, we started with 10 commissioners as a result of the merger, we're currently at nine. Four of those commissioners are eligible for reappointment in April, at the, to, to move forward in their, their seats. And then if new applicants are, excuse me, new applicants are only to be appointed if fewer than seven seats are to be filled. So that will not, over time, maintain the, the large body of nine, but eventually, as, as folks term out, we would get back to seven, seven commissioners. So some of the benefits that we saw from the, the merged commission was that the Complete Streets Commission provided a single platform to discuss transportation issues that require balancing and, and a discussion of trade-offs. It was also a consolidated resource for, for residents to come and voice their opinions on transportation issues, helping to reduce some of the meeting fatigue that we've heard from, from residents, especially in the last year. Also helps to meet some of the regional planning and funding goals that the Metropolitan Transportation Commission requires for, for complete streets to be considered. It also helps, as you know, with staff resources and having a staff, a single commission as opposed to two, and then is consistent with other, other cities' approaches, where generally we're seeing other cities move to a single Complete Streets Commission as well. So as summarized in the staff report, this was a survey of, of other cities in the region, and a, a description of the advisory bodies that they have on transportation issues. I won't walk through each of these, but you can, in short, see that two cities do have two advisory bodies, Atherton and Palo Alto. Atherton's committees meet every other month and advise the city council on transportation and bicycle and pedestrian issues. And then the city of Palo Alto has a Planning and Transportation Commission that meets twice per month. They serve a regulatory function, like our planning commission does, in addition to their, their role on transportation issues. And then they also have a pedestrian and bicycle advisory commission, or payback is what they call for short, and they meet monthly, but they're advisory to staff as opposed to their city council. So in general, there, there was no other city that we found that provides a monthly advisory body to the city council on transportation issues for both bicycle and transportation issues in a separate form. So the commission feedback that, that we heard in March was summarized both in the staff report you received, as well as from Chair Walzer, and the quarterly report last meeting. Things that we wanted to reiterate, a lack of newer completed projects, and particularly the Safe Routes to School program and the Willow's Neighborhood Study. The commissioners were desiring an advocacy body that was focused more on bicycle and pedestrian issues, and then a concern about longer meetings due to the, the larger commission size. So we went through the, the past agendas and then pulled some information just to quantify what the, the average length of the meetings are. So given the hour, I don't need to tell you all what, what this means, that the bicycle and transportation commissions were averaging in the last year before the, the merger occurred, two hours 15 minutes, two hours 20 minutes, so an adjournment roughly around 9:15 or 9:20. And then the Complete Streets Commission, over the last year, has averaged two hours 40 minutes, so roughly about 20 to 25 minutes beyond what the bike and transportation commissions were, were holding. And then one of the other items that the commission discussed was the number of items that were on both of the agendas between bicycle and transportation. So this is getting back to the meeting fatigue issue that we were raising that, from, from residents, as well as the, the staff support necessary. So in the- well as the, the staff support necessary. So in the, in the year prior to commission merger in 2016, 17, we had 19 items that occurred on both commission agendas. That's generally one to two per month, where we were, you know, publishing staff reports, staffing those meetings, and residents were then coming to both of those commission meetings in order to provide feedback to the two different bodies. So the staff report outlined three options for you to consider tonight. I will move ahead to, again, a spoiler on what some of the, the issues and trade-offs of each of these are. Reverting to two commissions, bicycle and transportation, and option one, our main concern with that option is the immediate effect that we will have on ongoing projects in the next few months, and in particular, based on the, the staff member that we think would be a liaison to the, the reformed bike commission would likely be to impact the Safe Routes to School program and establishing the Transportation Management Association, both of which we've, we've heard concern about keeping on track. And then the other two options to extend the pilot merger through the end of 2018 would allow us to attempt to address some of the feedback we've heard from the commission while minimizing some of the immediate efforts to the ongoing projects and work efforts. And then option three, which staff is not recommending tonight, would be to make the commission merger permanent at, at this time, but we think it's premature since it doesn't address some of the commissioners' concerns. So with that, as written in the staff report, our recommendation would be to extend the pilot merger through the end of the calendar year and allow us a chance to work with the commissioners on the feedback, as well as filling the, the two vacancies that we have in the Transportation Division to help reduce some of the, the project impacts that we're likely to see. And with that, we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Nikki. If there aren't any clarifying questions, we'll go to public comment. Bianca Walser patiently waiting in the mat. Thank you. Good evening.
Mayor Otaki, members of council, good evening. I come here tonight as an individual member of the commission. Three weeks ago, I came before you in my capacity as chair, and I think I was insufficiently emphatic three weeks ago, and so I'm going to correct that tonight. It is really hard to be invested in a position when what you say doesn't amount to anything. Staff asks us for feedback and we give it to them. Staff appears to listen, and then it seems that they just go and they do what they were planning to do anyway. A year ago, when I first came before you as chair, I asked for guidance for a work plan, and because this pilot was only for a year, council decided not to have us make a work plan. And that's turned out to be a source of frustration for us, because we don't have a plan. We don't have anything that we can act on. We only react to what staff chooses to bring to us. And the times that we have initiated things to put on the agenda, staff has not listened to our feedback, to the things that we tell them. So this, you know, half of, half of our members did not sign up to discuss speed bumps and red curbs. Changing, you know, for bicycle commissioners, this is a huge change in subject matter, and that was just sort of foisted upon them. So the longer the commissions stay merged, the greater this frustration grows. This was proposed as a one-year pilot. The one-year pilot has run its course. The people most directly involved in the pilot felt strongly that it did not work, and we voted eight to one to recommend that the pilot be ended. We're interested in, in mitigating the impact that this has on staff. You know, we would like to brainstorm holding meetings, joint meetings every other month, or working out other ways that we could minimize the, the impact, because we are cognizant that it has an impact on staff. But extending this pilot through the end of the year, it's too long. December will become April, and then April will become forever. And it's just, it's not working. So, you know, we'd like the pilot to end. Please, just let it end. Thank you.
Thank you, Bianca. Are there any other speaker cards for this item? Okay. All right. We'll bring it back up here. Vice Mayor Mueller.
I was just reflecting on the fact that it was seven years ago, I think, that Bianca and I were serving together on the Transportation Commission, and she's right, the subject matter was very different on the Transportation Commission than it was on the Bicycle Commission at that time. And people who served on the Transportation Commission actually got excited about red curbs and stop signs. And there were certainly time periods we had overlap with the Bicycle Commission, but frankly, what it gave was an opportunity for more public input at both commissions, because there were times when people could make one meeting or not the other. And there were times our commissions reached divergent views, and it led to more debate. When this pilot was first proposed, I really wasn't a big fan of it. I'm not definitely, now that it's gone forward and it's eight to one to end it, I'm ready. I, and I spoke at the meeting in favor. I mean, full disclosure, I was at the meeting where they discussed it, discussed it, listened to the commissioners talk about it. They were passionate about it. It was not a meeting that I would say people did not have opinions about when they came to vote, and I, I'm ready to end this pilot.
Thank you. Thank you for your staff report, Nikki. And Bianca, thanks for speaking tonight. I thought a couple more people might speak, as I look in the audience at commissioners. And, you know, Bianca, you and I have talked about this too, and, and I've talked with Katie and a couple others of you about this. So I, I understand it. I have a, I, one thing I heard you say is, Bianca, maybe meeting every other month, if that was some way to help alleviate. And so my question for staff and Nikki is how, it, you know, if they met every other month, for example, you wouldn't, you'd have same amount of meetings, but how would that affect the, the work capacity on your end?
Well, so what I heard Chair Walser say was a joint meeting every other month, not alternating months.
Okay. And then, I know, I talked with you about joint meetings, and at joint meetings, they can't take action.
Correct. So in a joint setting, the two commissions in the same room cannot take action. They would need to have a joint meeting to receive a staff presentation, adjourn to separate meetings to deliberate separately, and then provide recommendations. So from a, a staffing impact, we would still need two staff members there to moderate the discussions, so it doesn't necessarily save us any, any particular time during those sessions.
And what if they met, they met every other month? What, I'm just trying to brainstorm ideas. What, what would that do to your workload?
You're suggesting, like, alternating months. So one month-
Perhaps, just like-
-the Transportation Commission, one-
And then bicycle.
-the Bicycle Commission. Does that-
So I think, from a workload perspective, it, it would help us, from a project schedule standpoint, we would need to look really closely at how we're managing our projects to be brought forward. So if we needed something to go to, say, the Bike Commission first, and then the Transportation Commission, and we were off a month, we're then three months behind in order to get all the meetings scheduled that have to happen. Or looking to schedule special meetings of the committee, commission members accordingly.
And then, just talk to me about, one of the things we did when we did this pilot was we said, oh, okay, now that we've got this pilot, now we can do safe routes to school too. So can you talk, can you address that issue? I mean, what's, if, if we decide, no, you know what, everybody's passionate on these commissions, we need to separate it, what happens to safe routes to school?
So the, the short answer is I don't know yet. And I know that's not exactly what you want to hear, but the, we will be bringing forward next week to the city council, the quarterly work plan update, and at that point is where we're looking at all of the, the different competing priorities and trade-offs to be able to meet the milestones, you said, in the work plan. We had the, the rail meeting earlier tonight, and then a number of different things that are, we'll say, in some state of flux. And so that's where we're trying to then balance all of these different competing issues and minimize the schedule impacts, but also not burn out the staff that we have left. So I, I don't have a, a firm answer. I can tell you they will slow down, but I don't know exactly what that means yet until we regroup later this week.
Okay. And, I mean, you, you picked that one out for a certain reason.
So Safe Routes to School and the Transportation Management Association are the two projects that, two major projects that the staff member that we have that would be likely to be the liaison for the Bike Commission is working on, and so those are the things that are most likely to be impacted.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, I, this is one of the things we talked about when we did goal setting, about, like, trying not to add more things onto a staff agenda. And I know this isn't adding, well, it adds more if we break them up, and then we expect you to do all the work that we've asked you to do. So I, I'm not, I, I want to hear from my colleagues. I'm, I really feel for our commissioners who are here and who are not happy about the combination. And then I'm really concerned about if we, you know, break this up, because it's just not working, what it does to our, our, our projects that are transportation-related, that are pretty big around the city. So I'd like to just hear from a couple other people.
Councilmember Carlton.
Okay. So I have to admit, the first time this came before us, I voted against putting the two commissions together. And then people from both commissions spoke to me, including Adina Levin, who I have a great deal of respect for, who actually convinced me that putting them together as one commission was a better idea. It was a better way of providing complete streets, which we've all agreed is a, a goal that we would like. No one likes the, the division between, or perceived or real, the, the car group and the bicycle group. We all want to make sure, I think, the whole goal of having complete streets was making sure that we taught and we created a venue where everyone was safe and everyone could get from point A to point B with whatever vehicle they chose or they needed to, to use at that particular point in time. And I agree, I checked with staff, and they confirmed that many project schedules have seriously benefited from the streamlined process. And I am really passionate, thank you, Jen, for all the great work you do, about safer route to school, about a lot of these projects. We've done great things, not only red curb, we've done, you know, support for grants, the Middle Avenue Pedestrian Bike Rail Crossing Project, Oak Grove, and then all the things that has come up with Willow Road, 101 interchange. But staff has made it really clear that the projects that we have clearly said so, the majority of the projects that have been on our key list for this year in our goal setting were transportation, and those will be significantly slowed down if not, one of them might not happen this year. And that concerns me a great deal. And I, it also concerns me that residents like to be heard, and having to go to multiple meetings with 19 similar things. I, I worry about stressing out residents and having to attend a bunch of meetings. I also understand that they're frustrated that it feels like it's not going fast enough. I'm frustrated that we own, that a third of our, our transportation staff isn't there. We're missing a third of our staff. That's huge. And good luck. I sincerely hope that we can hire amazing people by the end of June. I think that would be excellent. It's a very, very good target to do. And I think the lack of, of moving as fast as we would like is not due to commission, commissions being together, it's due to the fact that we're missing a third of our staff. And it, I'm really concerned about transparency and about making sure that we make this work, as terms of really creating complete streets. And if your only tool is a hammer, all the world looks like a nail. And I think there's a great deal of benefit to having people who maybe have a bias towards bicycles, or bias towards buses, or bias towards different things, in the same room, having a discussion together, to learn from each other, from the different perspectives, and to work together to find a common solution, because that common solution's going to have to live together on the streets. And that's the whole purpose of having complete streets, is completely all working together. And what Bianca said about being frustrated about not being able to work on everything you want to, when I was on Parks and Rec, I had that same frustration. We have a process where the, the commissioners get together and they put together a work plan, they bring the work plan to the council, we say that. I don't think we've ever said anything other than, yeah, that looks good. And maybe add some stuff to it as, as things happen in the world that we're not planning on. But the process is you, you come up with what you want to work on, and then you work on it. And we try not to get distracted by other things, because then the complete streets, the safer route to school slips even further behind. And so I'm more inclined to give this until December, to bring in the staff, please, please. I know you're working really hard. Do you honestly believe that you can hire them by the end of June?
So at the time we wrote the staff report, I will say I was more optimistic, which was only a couple of days ago, but we interviewed candidates last Thursday, and we had invited nine, and four did not show up. So that gives an idea of just the competitiveness of the market. Some people had gotten interviews with Drew, and others. So we, we interviewed four candidates. We did have good candidates come through, but just with that level of competition and that environment, I, I don't know at this point if we can fill them by the end of June. I'm cautiously optimistic, but we'll, we'll have to see how the, the remaining interviews go.
When do you think you'd be able to hire them?
So we would be looking to make offers towards the end of the month.
Okay. So do you still suggest that we extend it till December?
So I think the, the overall timeline of the projects that we have going on is not changing, and I think that's what I was trying to get us over the hurdle of getting some things in motion through the rest of this year, and simultaneously looking to bring people on board and integrate them over the next few months. But I, I think the project schedule deadlines was the, the driver behind the recommendation to extend the, the pilot for, from my perspective.
Okay. Well, if we put it till December and it doesn't work, we review it in December, but that's, that's my suggestion. And I encourage the two groups to work together for complete streets. That is the whole point, is to better understand transportation as a whole. I think Adina Levin spoke last time to this end, and I guess they say there's no converted, but there's no religious likely converted. You know, you guys have convinced me that, that this really is a good option for the city. And it's a good option, not only in terms of the quality of decisions that come out, and better understanding each other, and working together for complete streets, but also in making sure that we don't slow down staff so that we can actually get some of this work done. And I'm very concerned about safety. I'm very concerned about making sure that we do the right thing for the city and get these projects completed and completed well, as well as we can and as soon as we can.
Councilmember Klein.
Thank you. I, I remember clearly the Parks and Rec Commission, the six years there, and I, yeah, the Transportation Commission, as I've viewed it, and I've always viewed it, is it's, 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 it's one of the critical bodies for all of our project approvals, planning, looking out at those things. And, and I do think that the system did relatively, I mean, it, we didn't get a complete streets formula going, but we also, you know, didn't because we brought them together. I mean, we had, there's an awareness process we all went through on that. The Bike Commission was very proactive the last two years, which drove a lot more dialogue and a lot more interaction, and I think that, that's, you know, a great cause. But I've always felt in my heart, transportation includes bicycles. You can't say it the other way. Transportation is the, really covers all of the major topics. I think Transportation Commission should be its own, a structure on its own, in dealing with the big topics that transportation deals with, and I think that the Bicycle Commission should be separated from that. But I don't, you know, and I, and I don't mean this at all in any- But I don't, you know, and I, and I don't mean this at all in any way, I just, I don't think the bicycle commission has the same urgent items on, as much on a basis as transportation does, based on where the projects are. Transportation Commission is the one that's got to make reviews on multiple facets of transportation and planning. The bike commission can feed in very well to that, but I don't think they need to be merged. I, and my concern is that, you know, part of this is, it's the construct, but it's also, now let's, let's look at project load, but then, you know, let's, how do we streamline meetings, you know, and, and make meetings more about decision trees and getting things done, and less about relying on that we have to meet, you know? If there's a way to set it up so that you can have two bicycle, two bicycle commission members, two transportation on a subcommittee, they can work on the projects, bring it back for that one meeting, both sides can have their meetings, you can have a month where you don't have meetings. And I, I think that's ideal, I, I believe it up here. We had meetings every week on City Council when I joined, now we have them every other week on average. And staff does work when there's no meetings. And that's, you just know that when you've been around it long enough, that's, that's when staff can get work done, they can't get it done when there's meetings. And so I think there just needs to be an adjustment to the scheduling and the management of it, and I do think the two, Transportation Commission is the principal agency next to Plan Commission, in my view, when you have to send things for these major plans to get done. It's, it's a lot. Trains, it's trains, it's bikes, it's PEDs, it's whatever you drive, you know? You fly on a drone, it's a drone now. You know, whatever transportation is, it's massive, and I think it's critical. And I do think there's some joint work to be done, but I've never believed you have to have a meeting every, every month, all the time, if you have subcommittees getting work done, and sending things to staff and getting approval, so I'd like to see it that way.
Counselor, did you, did, did you have a follow-up? Or, oh, sorry, I gotta try to look at the lights on the screen. Vice Mayor Mueller.
Yeah, so I just wanted to stress for my colleagues, number one, staff hasn't said the Complete Streets Commission will go away. I mean, not that, hasn't said that Safe, Safe Routes to School will go away. And they haven't even said that the person who works on the committee is going to be the person assigned to this. They said it might, right? Well, it might be, well, it might be. And we haven't looked at what the workload of that person will be for the one extra meeting a month, and how that would somehow cause the whole Complete Streets project to go away. So, you know, so I just want to make that clear for the record, that wasn't what was said. And then the other thing I want to say is that when we did this, we said it would be a one-year pilot. The one year is up. And one of the things that we heard from the commission tonight when they said, when they came to talk to us, was, "We feel like we're not listened to." And then the very thing, we're gonna turn around and say, "Yeah, well, thanks for your input, but you guys need to go back and really focus on being Complete Streets Commission." I've been at their meetings multiple times. They care about complete street issues, that's not the issue. They're all passionate about multimodal transit. It's really an issue of subject matter and when things come to them, and, and how they're interacting with us. And they want to go back to the way it was before, because all of these commissions were on the commission when it was a bike commission, and when it was on a transportation commission. It's not something that was separate to them, and they feel like they were getting more accomplished from both a multimodal perspective and in their subject matter work when they were two different commissions. They are telling us now, this doesn't work. The pilot's up. I think we should listen to them.
I'm just trying to think about when I'm gonna make some comments, or before we go back around on follow-ups, but I, I guess, I'll say I'm very much torn about this, just, just because, you know, we, we have great commissioners who are volunteering their time, and, and we've heard very clearly their frustrations, and, and I certainly don't want to waste or have them feel like their time is being wasted. On the other hand, we are in a very severe staff capacity situation this year, and, and our limited transportation staff is completely preoccupied with projects that we as a council have elevated as among the top projects for the city. The Transportation Master Plan being one of them, safe routes to schools. And in many ways, and I, I heard Bianca's frustration about not having a work plan, and I, and I understand, in many ways, the work plan, we have just in effect assigned in January, that it's the Transportation Master Plan, Complete Streets. So, so I certainly, you know, certainly apologize in, in the respect that we have in, in effect assigned you, that, that, because that's what the capacity that we have here. So, you know, what I, I'm fearful of, I don't want to lose commissioners, I also certainly don't want to lose staff members, and want to make it work for, for Nikki and her team. And so I really, and, and when we were talking earlier about a couple of different options, well, what if we alternated the months? But then now it becomes very difficult for, for Nikki and staff to plan when each commission is going to see a particular item or whatever. I, you know, I'd really like to, I guess I'm, I'm siding on with Councilmember Carlton in at least seeing if we can keep going for, to the end of the year, particularly in light of the Transportation Master Plan just essentially preoccupying all of the bandwidth. And, and I really welcome the, whether it's the combined commission or the individual commissioners focusing all of their great input on that and complete streets as essentially the work plan, so that can help us get, get through that. I would be delighted next year to think about splitting the committees back, but, but I'm also trying to be sensitive to the, to, I think, the very limited bandwidth that we have right now, and, and pleading for some understanding of that on the part of the commission members. So that's sort of where I'm, I'm leaning. I'm not positive on it, but, but I'm trying to kind of balance these two very valid concerns. Councilmember Key.
Oh, I think I've, so I-
Oh, I'm sorry.
I-
Well, do my-
I see, you know, we've got a lot of our commissioners here in the back row, and one of the things I'm trying to understand, and maybe Bianca, you could come up and just enlighten me, I need to understand, what are the things that you're trying to move forward that you can't? Because part of, and I'll talk while you're coming up here. I thought that's what I heard you say, is that there are things you want to move forward that you can't move forward, and I, what part of my concern is that we do, we do goal setting, and as you've already heard, I'm repeating what we've heard, we, we set a bunch of transportation goals that we need to get through.
Right.
And one of the biggest, and you know, you know, it's our Transportation Master Plan, and when we get to that next item, we're going to be adding more meetings probably, or we're going to, at least our subcommittee of-
So the Complete Streets Commission does not have a role in the TMP?
Right.
I mean, I don't know why that is, but-
Because-
There's one commissioner on the TMP Advisory Oversight Committee.
Let me just, I'll ask Nikki, Nikki, how did we do the development of that, of that group?
So the, the Oversight and Outreach Committee body that the council established through the Transportation Master Plan is much like the process that you set up for the General Plan Advisory Committee, where there's one representative from each of a number of commissions who is then the liaison back to their commission. And so for the Complete Streets Commission, it's Commissioner Levin, but we are not scoped to bring every submission that we're bringing to the Oversight and Outreach Committee to the individual commissions in addition to the OOC. So it's very similar to what you saw in the General Plan Advisory Committee process, where we're bringing items forward to the GPAC, and then that liaison works back with the commission to provide updates and share information and keep them involved through the process.
Okay. So I, I mean, we put people on there, we, you know, we went through a process to put that together, but I, can you, what, what are you trying to go forward?
So, one of the things that came up when the commission was discussing this was, when the bicycle commission was separate, the bicycle commission had the bandwidth to folk, to think up, "We should have a pilot on Oak Grove, and let's do that." And there were seven bicycle commissioners who could work on that and focus on that. And they didn't have to pay any attention to, you know, the NTMP, which was a completely foreign subject to them when they joined the Complete Streets Commission, right?
Yeah.
So all of a sudden, they're spending, they're sitting in meetings where they're listening to 45 minutes of residents arguing about speed bumps, and the bicycle commissioners are going, "This is not what we-"
Signed up.
"-signed up for."
Yeah.
"We want, we want to work on bicycle proj-" you know, they were saying to me, I was always on the Transportation Commission, but what I heard was, the bicycle commission in particular was very frustrated with feeling that their bandwidth was divided, they did not have the time or, or, or any attention from staff, but, you know, even things that they could have done on their own, they, they just, they didn't have the ability to work on those projects.
Part of my concern, Bianca, Chair Walser, is that I'm looking at the next topic that we're going to get to.
Yeah.
And I know Nikki is down people, and I know we have to hire people, and I look at this and I think, I guess I could ask Nikki too. Nikki, what are, what, on the goal setting, I mean, what are all the goals that we've set for our, for transportation? What is the, we have the grade crossings coming back?
For the, the work plan milestones, so we have, on the top six priorities, so we'll just start, start there. The Transportation Master Plan, and trying to, to keep that on schedule, what you'll see in the next item is that we're recommending it not be on schedule in order to accommodate the additional meetings and the, the next steps that we talked about with the, the subcommittee on Monday. The Guild Theater, which has been staffed by myself, which is not necessarily the most effective way to, to do that work, but that's where we are in terms of capacity, so that's what we're doing. We have the parking structure, so we had our Associate Transportation Engineer Kevin Chen was at that meeting helping prep for the community dialogue last night. He'll be at the commission meeting tomorrow night staffing that, that process. And then the other two, the Safe Routes to School program. And so, as I mentioned earlier, we think the likely candidate for staffing the bike commission, if they were to be split, is the person who's leading the Transportation Management Association and the Safe Routes to School program development. And so it's, I understand that it's one meeting, but developing the agenda, staffing the meeting, the estimates that we put together, it's 10 to 12 hours a month. And so it's a day and a half of work that he's then not getting done. It can affect his baseline work, which is managing the shuttle program. That's day-to-day stuff that has to happen, and so it's these longer-term projects that I, we don't have much choice, we don't have much backup staff capacity to shift things around at this point. So that's, I think that was five of the six, and I'm not remembering the, the last.
The downtown specific plan.
Thank you, which you, you just heard.
Right.
And there, there's an element of parking rates, development potential that comes through transportation as well. So they're, they're all touching us, and that's, that's this balancing act that we have. I, I very much am sympathetic to what we're hearing from, from the commission members. Quite honestly, I just don't know how to help you any better than what we're doing right now with the constraints that we have.
Okay, all right. I, I thank you, and I just want to, you know, I appreciate all the work, Bianca, that's, thank you for coming back up, it's good, I appreciate it. All the work that you, you, both of our commissions, well, did, and our Complete Streets Commission does now, I think there are growing pains, and I think, you know, I, I actually was liaison to the bicycle commission, so I was at those meetings, and they were very productive, and we had, you know, there, there was a lot of drive. At that time, though, we had been looking at El Camino Real, and then that, that project got waylaid and still hasn't even come back. And instead, we went to the Oak Grove Bicycle Boulevard and got that in place. And so I, I think, you know, there are competing interests right now. I'm, I'm interested in having a discussion about, I, I hear your frustration, I definitely do, and I've talked to you about this, but I'm really concerned about slowing things down. And I know it's April, and part of me is leaning towards, please, sticking together in this through December, so we can get through this year and our Transportation Master Plan meetings, and, and, which includes, we just sent out the circulation element to all the people on the OOC, because we're saying, please read the circulation element. It has so much in it, it has so much for biking, for PEDs, for, for, there's, there's a ton. And the TMP is supposed to touch across the entire city. And so I, I'm, I'm interested probably in listening to this again about separating it, but I am really concerned about doing it right now, while we're trying to move this, the TMP forward, and we're adding a lot more outreach on the TMP program. And I think, for myself, when I, you know, I was going to talk about this when we start talking about the TMP, I, when, when we did Connect Menlo and four of us voted for it, it was with the understanding that, you know, we realize there are transportation issues that we have to address, and we will, and that's through this project, this process with the TMP. And it's, it's a really important process and a project this year to get done, and get it done well, because if we don't, then, you know, I, I, I don't know what's going to happen, but we need, we need, this is a high priority for the city. So I hear your frustration, I'll talk with you over coffee tomorrow, all of you, but I am really concerned, as I've already said, about losing steam on what we're trying to do right now. So I would ask you to please hang tight together through December, when we can have this come back. I understand your frustration, believe me, but I'm just asking you to please work with us on these transportation issues, on our Safe Routes to School, on our pedestrian and bike access for the whole city through December. And I understand people feel like, well, gosh, this isn't what I wanted to, to do, but I don't think if we did, if we-
That's not, that's not what we're getting to do.
Yeah, this is, I think, I think I understand.
Okay.
I think, so, can I just check for a minute? Because this is my, my understanding is, what I'm hearing my colleagues say is that they're worried about slowing, and staff saying, "We're worried about slowing projects down." I think what the commissioners are trying to say is, if our input is valued in those very same projects, we're much better apart. And so there's kind of like a, no?
No.
I don't think we understand.
Well, can I? I think I do.
Councilmember Carlton.
I may not understand every detail, but let me, let me, let me clarify what I was saying before about the process. If I were you, I would be very frustrated, because maybe I'm, I'm a list kind of person, but you need a work plan. You know, you need to get together and say, "These are the things." You look at what the city council has on their list, you look at the projects that you have, absolutely you need a work plan. And I, I understand that sometimes it feels like you're not being listened to, and sometimes you are, people are listening, some people are understanding, they're just not necessarily agreeing. But, and I worry about making bike a lower level to transportation, that's a whole horrible can of worms that-
Sideways.
Okay, sideways, it meets every other month, then they're not reviewing everything, and that's, that worries me. Or you can have a bike subcommittee, that's part of the, the Complete Streets, but I, I worry about that. But I absolutely feel that, that there should be a work plan, and that you should have input on the projects that you're working on, so if there's something really interesting that you put together. I don't know why there wasn't a work plan, it seems kind of odd, but maybe that's just, as, as Councilmember Keith said, maybe that's part of the growing pains that we learn as we, we put this together.
I don't normally do this, but, but I'd like to invite Katie to come up, just because she looks like she's itching to-
She looks like she's going to explode.
Yeah. So.
I can't speak for my fellow commissioners, and I think we probably all have subtly different ideas about how this works. So I think the idea of Complete Streets Commission is great, and I would say, Councilmember Carlton, that we actually are not in any way, shape, or form factions, I like, we actually are pretty unified in our outlook on Complete Streets, so that's not the issue. It's not like the bike people don't like the other people or anything, there, we're all bike people, and we're all drivers, and we're all walkers, and we, we kind of all get it, so that's not the issue. It's more that, and I don't, I've never went to Transportation Commission meetings, so I don't know what they were like before, I just know what Bike Commission meetings were like. We got a lot done, we were in the Fish Bowl, which was a very different format. I'm casual, I miss that. But regardless, it really felt that we had, we had a work plan and we executed against it, and I know that staff- And I know that staffing and the lack of staffing is difficult to take apart from this. Like, we have maybe a causal versus correlation effect going on here. It's possible that if we were still a Bike Commission with the current levels of staffing, we would be equally frustrated. Um, and I think that's something that we should consider. But I will say that, um, the lack of a work plan and the strange mixture of things that we're being asked to provide input on and not being asked to provide input on has been really challenging for me personally. So, it's strange to me that on a Transportation Master Plan Oversight and Outreach Committee, there's only one Complete Streets Commissioner there. If we'd had a Bike Commission still, I bet there would have been a Bike Commissioner on there. So, now, I mean, we'd have, we have three Planning Commissioners, because two Planning Commissioners were, um, excited enough to be part of it that they, uh, presented themselves as at-large candidates. If I'd even known that was an option, I would have done that myself. But I, you know, it feels like we're not fully represented there. And then, things about the TMP so far have come to us in kind of like an informational context. So, we get information, but we're not necessarily being given a lot of opportunities to provide input. And given that the, the TMP is supposed to replace the bike and PED plans for the city, that's of concern to me personally. Um, and I think too, that, you know, we just structurally, the way, um, the way we've made this happen with the NTMP and all these things, we are almost required to provide input on a lot of things that probably the staff could manage fine without us. And then, there are really bigger strategic issues that we would like to be more involved in, or at least, that's my perception, that we are not getting to. So, that's, that's my frustration. We spend a lot of time talking about minutia, and we never get to the good stuff, which is the thing that really drove us to want to be part of the thing to begin with.
Which is, which is why I, I agree with you all, that you need a good work plan that is put together, so that you can also have a plan that you check off and you, and you feel that you have, and you see that you have momentum as you move forward. And this, these are the really hard decisions. When I, when we look at people and we understand, um, and we have to make hard decisions to try and get things, and I'm not picking on Safe Routes to School or one or the other, it's the whole progress that we need to get done together. And, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I'll let Councilmember Keith.
I, I just want to ask Nikki while you've heard this, is there, are there things that, that you could not take to them? Are there more things that you couldn't take? And maybe, is it, is there a room for a discussion on what's going to them and what's not? Restructuring?
So, I think what, what we heard through both the feedback from the Commissioners and then, um, at the Commission Meeting and then tonight, is, um, I think, a lot of concern and frustration around the NTMP. And so, I, I'm looking for validation on that.
I see Nina nodding her head.
But I, I know there's also been a longstanding conversation between formerly the Transportation Commission and the Council about whether you want to amend the NTMP. And so, um, I, I, I don't, I really don't want to sign up for any new projects.
I don't think we have the bandwidth right now for that one.
We, we do not. But I, I think there is a, there's an underlying issue about whether we are, I'll say, adequately strategic planning versus dealing with isolated issues. And I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but this, this is why we need the TMP. This is why we need a master plan to guide these prioritization conversations, because dealing with these isolated issues, um, isolated projects, isolated priorities, um, is a very challenging way to manage a work, workload year to year. And so-
Yeah, I mean, I, my comparison and analysis would be like when you don't have design guidelines, residential design guidelines. We've heard that from some of our Planning Commissioners. So, that can be frustrating, because you keep getting these little things that keep coming back that maybe wouldn't need to if you could do the long-term planning. So, are you just saying then that once we get through this TMP process, that it's possible that the, what is brought to this Commission changes? Is that what-
Well, um, so I think what, what the TMP gives us is kind of a list of priorities that we can strategically work through, whether it's looking for grant funds, whether it's, um, pursuing, um, you know, an individual, um, bike network project or a crosswalk improvement. It, it just gives us a little bit more clarity, both at the staff level and for the community, on what the, what the vision is and what's next. And I think that's where the Bicycle Commission, um, was successful in designing those priority projects in order to move forward. Um, but then, it was a, it was a huge lift for them, and I don't want to speak for them, but they, they did a lot of work in order to, um, raise it to a level of, of getting on the Council work plan, working with stakeholders in order to, to ensure that it, it would be implemented successfully. And so-
Okay.
What the TMP, I think, allows us to do is, um, uh, not have to have that heavy lift on every project, but give us that roadmap that we need.
And the, the TMP, this is not, how often do you do a TMP in a city?
Um, so-
We haven't done one for what, 40 years?
Once in my lifetime would be ideal. Um, we, we were calling for minor updates every five years to make sure that it stays accurate, but not necessarily an, an overhaul.
And the last time the city did a TMP?
Never.
Never. So, the city's never done a TMP. I mean, just, I, I'm gonna, I know this is taking a long time, and it's now 10:45. With that information, we've never done a TMP ever. And I know, um, I, I really want to stay on track with this. I'm going to please ask you, as a Commission, to, uh, let us look at this in December, once we can get through this TMP that we've never had and never done. And, and then, um, or, you know, maybe if, if you are able to hire new staff, um, we can look at it in a few months after you actually have two new staff members. I mean, I'd be willing to do that, but I, I, I want to see you hire two new staff members.
Can I also make a suggestion? My, I'm assuming the TMP OCC, if I get the acronym correct. Meetings are open to the Complete Streets.
I was just gonna, I was gonna say that too. Thank you, Mayor Taki, that-
As a way to allow the Complete Streets Commissioners-
Right.
-to attend and be part of the TMP discussion, but not duplicating by having the TMP covered in the Complete Streets meetings, so that in those Complete Streets meetings, the focus is on the, you know, blocking and tackling of some of the, you know, the, the more specific issues.
Right, I would say, Chair Walser, you did come, thank you, to the TM, the meeting we had. And Katie. And, I mean, yes, all of you were there. Every, all of you were there. And, and as you noticed when we were there, that, uh, we're taking, you know, comments from the public and writing questions, and we can certainly get the answers, um, you know, to those questions that are coming in at those meetings. So, I mean, please come to those meetings, and please, please bring your input. And I'm happy to meet with you, uh, offline on this as well. But if you, I, I'm, I'm gonna, my vote is going to be to keep this together through December, so we can get through this TMP that we've never had as a city. And then, and then we refresh, and we look at this again. Or, when you get some more staff people, Nikki.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, but can I, is, can it be-
Last words.
Can it be a hard stop in December? Does it have to come back to us in December? Can it just be, "It's over"?
I don't, I want to see if, what's going on. I mean, Nikki said that there were, Nikki, can you address that? Because you said that you had, uh, issues you wanted to deal with the Commissioners with still in your report. Or you haven't addressed their concerns?
Yeah, I, I think, um, one of our, our concerns, this was originally set to come before you, um, at your last meeting in, in March. And we took a pause to regroup and make, um, sure that we were understanding and hearing the Commission feedback that, that we got from their March meeting in order to then bring this forward to you in, in April, um, because a lot of it was, was new. Um, so, I had mentioned, we had done a check-in in October, and the, the feedback that we received in October, um, was much more positive or, at worst, neutral than compared to what we got in March. And so, I, I was venturing that a lot of the frustration is, is due to the fact that we're, we're not advancing the key projects at the pace that was desired. And so, filling vacancies and moving projects forward would help address some of those concerns. Um, so that was part of the, the rationale behind the, the recommendation as well. Um, I think if, if you, I, if you would prefer to amend the resolution to bring back, um, a discussion sooner, in say, September, and I'm just, at this point, I'm just throwing stuff out there, um, it, it's in your hands to, to guide how we want to move forward. And then, we will assess workload and figure out the way to deliver those things, um, in the work plan when we come back next week.
Because Nikki, isn't the idea that with, when, when we finally adopt the TMP, the idea is that, uh, it will make things run more smoothly? Isn't that the whole point?
I, I think, yes, um, and more transparent in terms of what the priorities are.
So, so I'm a little confused, because it was a pilot. And at the end of a pilot, you make an assessment whether or not the pilot was successful. And we heard from the Commissioners on the Commission, the pilot was unsuccessful. And the reason why I've heard tonight while we're going to continue it has nothing to do with whether or not the pilot was working. It has to do with the fact of staff constraints. So, my question is, if we are then thinking we are going to be staffed up by the end of December, why would we then continue a pilot that people have said doesn't work? Why would we not just say, "Okay, we expect that at a certain point, we will have staffing capacity, and when we have staffing capacity, the pilot didn't work, so we'll go ahead and return to, to Commissions"?
I do think, I do think, if, if I may interject, I do think, um, what Nikki's said, not only tonight, but also in the staff report, is that, uh, also, she hopes that the additional capacity that will come on board will help to address some of the concerns and issues raised by staff, uh, raised by the Commissioners. Also, the other factor is that hopefully, if the Commissioners at least can be engaged in the TMP, maybe they might also feel like they're, uh, having some input in what they view is, and appropriately so, is one of the most strategic aspects for the city right now.
That's fine. I mean, respectfully, I just, I weigh the Commissioners' input more over this. I understand there's a staff, staffing capacity issue, but with respect to whether or not the pilot's been successful, we've heard pretty strongly from the Commissioners, it wasn't.
So, what I'd like to do is, because we spent plenty of time, if we, if we could, let's, I think it's time to, uh, well, there is called a question, but there's, it needs to be a motion on the table. Is there a motion?
I don't think so.
Okay, so, uh-
I mean, I'll make a motion that we, uh, bring this back for review. But I'm also going to make, in my motion, that, that staff work with the Complete Street Commissioners to figure out what the, more clarity on what the-
The work plan?
The work plan and the roles.
I'd second that.
And what we're, what, what it is that, that we're doing. I think there needs to be an offline discussion about this, to see if we can, uh, figure out some more clarity.
I second that.
All right. We have a-
And Nikki, uh, I didn't say the date, September, December, but please, your input.
Um, what we had initially proposed was through December. Um, that's what's in the current resolution. But if you want to change that, that's, that's at the Council's discretion.
Okay. I really, I do want to get through the TMP, but I do want to have a discussion with the Chair and the Vice Chair and staff about how to restructure, so that, um, we can deal with maybe some of the frustration that's being felt right now.
Okay, so, um, I think we can go to, to the voting screen.
The motion passes three to two.
All right, thank you, everyone. Let's go to, oh, it's-
And Mayor, if I may interrupt briefly.
Yes.
We will have to do a vote to extend this meeting past 11 per Council policy.
Yes, so, given that, uh, we take a vote before 11 as to whether we're going to, uh, go, uh, go past 11, I guess. Uh, we have one more item, which is the TMP. Um, I do think that we can, uh, we can cover it. In fact, we've covered parts of it while we were discussing.
I'm, I'm happy to, to extend that, but, um, my husband's in Germany, and I have a babysitter who turns into a pumpkin, so I will be leaving at 11:30 regardless. I apologize. I, uh, life intervenes occasionally.
On L1, I just wanted to, at some point, see if we could refer that issue to the Historical Society for their input. It's an informational item. That was the only thing I wanted to do with the item, once we received it, to see, I don't know if we can even take action on that tonight, but I did want to have the Historical Society-
Is the Historical Society a commission?
No, it's not, but we can still ask for their input.
I, I don't understand the question. Will you just?
It might be a historical bill.
Wait, did we skip regular business?
So, yeah, let's, let's just, let's make sure we're, uh, can we do-
Well, if, I just want to say, if we're adjourning at 11:30, I don't, well, I want to continue the informational items.
Oh, I don't think she's suggesting she has to-
Well, I actually, like, at 11:30, I'd like to head out too, frankly, so.
Okay, all right. Um, so, is there at least a consensus to go through 11:30?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, and we need a, do we need a super major, or a super majority vote?
Yes, it'll be a super majority vote.
That's by acclamation, I think.
I'll take, uh, by acclamation? I think we have by acclamation here, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, if I can, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm doing the eyes across the room here. The staff does not have any confidence we can get through this in a half hour.
Okay.
To be clear. Just, I'm sorry to do that to you. It's just, I'm looking across.
Can we start? And-
The problem with starting is we'll have to restart it again in a week, and next week's meeting is frankly just as jammed up as well, so.
Then I think we should start.
My point is, we'll have to do it again next week, no matter what. It was not like we can pick up where we left off, because the audience will want to understand where we've been. And we can't turn this, well, we can turn this around in two week, in one week, because we could just continue the item to the 24th.
Can, can you just, uh, tell me a little bit of, so, we were going to have a full presentation, uh-
Yeah, so the, so there's basically a full presentation to walk the Council through where we've been with regards to the TMP, what, what makes it so important, what is under the umbrella of the TMP, what is not under the umbrella of the TMP, how we need to move forward with the recommendation of the two Council Subcommittee Members, Keith and Carlton. Um, and frankly, losing Carlton halfway through probably won't help this process either. And I don't mean to pick on Councilmember Carlton on this, so.
How long is the presentation? There's, there's not an action item, is there?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay.
How long is the presentation?
So, I think, because there was a lot of, um, confusion around the scope of the TMP and, and the questions that we got, both from the Oversight and Outreach Committee, as well as from the Council, we're, we're starting from the beginning. And so, basically, from the time that Connect Menlo was adopted, walking through, um, a number of the different issues and, and policy context, and so, it's a hefty presentation that I don't know that you really want to start at 11 o'clock with a 30-minute window. But we, we could have some conversation around some of the process and the recommendations that the Subcommittee gave for additional meetings. We can then tee up to bring back, um, some of that authorization request for you, but we won't, we should not cover, um, the infrastructure conversation tonight, given the time constraints.
Okay.
I think the, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I think the foundational conversation is going to be very important, so that you guys can make really good, uh, clear decisions on, in, in clear direction, because I think that's perhaps where we have had some stumbles on this, is perhaps a lack of full, complete understanding and meeting of the minds of the Council, the Commissions, the OOC, as well as the staff. And I think that's part of this, this, um, challenge right now, so.
So, if we don't start tonight, and I already know next week's agenda is-
Yeah, the, the two big items you have next week, the two big items you have next week are the library and the parking structure.
Yeah.
Um, there's a bunch of other items as well, but those are the two heavy lift items. Um, you do not have a closed session.
I don't know how we're going to be able to, if we don't do, if we can't do it next, next week, uh, can, if, is it too late if we have it in May? Or how do we, uh, how do we balance this? Because I don't see next week's meeting being really-
Is it possible the library, me, library can come on a different agenda? It's not even a Council priority. The TMP is a huge project.
I agree.
So, one possibility, I think, one of the, the schedule critical items for us to kind of make sure that we're continuing to move forward is, is the next steps in terms of process. And so, I think with the two Subcommittee Members in the room and me just walking through, like the last two slides, I think I can explain the conversation that we had on Monday. And then the important thing that we could bring back around the regional infrastructure conversation is the, the longer conversation. So maybe we can-
I kind of agree with Councilmember Mueller. Can we not table the library and put the TMP in its place?
We can, we can do that. We, we can move the library into May and take the TMP in lieu of the library and just take, because that library conversation, I think, was going to be a robust one as well. I mean, from a time management argument, I think that was the intention. The only issue with May, I'm sorry to do this to you, but neither the city attorney nor the city manager will be here on the May 8th, 7th council meeting, which shouldn't be a problem. I still think we can take that item. I think if the, the will is at the council level now, why don't we go ahead and perhaps wrap this up? I will work with the mayor to, to build the next several agendas to figure out how we get through the work we have ahead of us.
Got it, okay. So with that, shall we just, we just not start tonight, let's just go to, let's put all of it together next week? Are you, are you good with that? Still fits your, our schedule? Okay, all right, with that, let's just, so informational items and-
I'll agree with, with Ray, we could bring, allow the Historic Society just to weigh in, that's fine.
I just want to, I just want to clarify what we're asking them, because isn't it a fact that it's a historical building? We know that?
So it is, if, I mean, if you read the staff report, there are certain actions, there's certain actions that the city can take right now that hasn't, haven't been taken. And I'd love to hear the Historical Society's opinion on those things.
Okay.
Okay, any, any other questions on information items? Let's see, any council member reports? Oh, we do have a speaker, oh, on the gun buyback, okay. Danielle, if you're still here.
She's thought flashing away.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you for, thank you for letting me-
Sorry, I'll be really brief. Thank you for hearing from me tonight. My name is Danielle Lacampña and I'm with Citizens for San Mateo County Gun Buyback. And I'm here as a representative of that group. And we asked in February, we met with Sheriff Bolanos, asking to put on another large-scale gun buyback in San Mateo. That we had one in 2013 that was extremely successful. Obviously, the momentum right now is very heightened awareness of these issues. So I brought a letter that Sheriff Bolanos wrote about our collaboration that I've already emailed to, to you, but I wanted to also bring it tonight in case you haven't seen it. And you probably know what the purpose of a gun buyback is, but it's to dispose of unwanted guns in the community. Our group is quite concerned about suicide and the risk of suicide. It's about 22 out of three gun deaths in the United States are due to suicide. In San Mateo County, there were 25 suicides in 2016, per the last coroner's report. Additionally, as you know, the incident that happened at YouTube, it's, it's always said, you see it on the news all the time, that nobody thought it could happen here, it can't happen here. And there's a YouTube video that you could look at for the most dangerous weapon that was turned in 2013. It was called the Street Sweeper. The name says it all. And a couple of weeks ago in Santa Cruz County, they had a very successful gun buyback. They ran out of money, they, they had 618 guns surrendered. So we have a feeling, given that our population is about three times that in our county. We've had great success. It's a, it's definitely something that the citizens on, by and large, really support. We have the support of 5,000 through Redwood City, San Mateo, Belmont, Hap Moon Bay, Millbrae, and last night, Burlingame. 10,000 from Woodside and Portola Valley, 10,000 from Jackie Spear, and $50,000 from San Carlos Matching Funds. Now, it sounds like a lot of money, but we're asking your, your council to contribute as well. We do not want to be there and waiting with cars in line without adequate funds. And so we're, we're coming, reach out to you tonight for, for that contribution. Sorry it's late and a little inarticulate, but in trying to go fast. So thank you, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Alex. I know this is within your authority to, but I do want to thank you for participating.
The info item really was just to make the council aware that we were going to contribute, like all the other cities had, many of the other cities had done at the 5,000 level as we had been requested.
Okay. With that, we are adjourned until next week.